Good evening, everyone. This is the June 5th meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen. And I ask everybody to stand for the Pledgeable Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full agenda tonight, so, and I'd see we have quite a few people here. I'm not sure what everyone is interested in this evening, but we'll, we are going to ask for public comment first, so I'd ask people to try to limit their comments to three minutes. We're trying to be helpful to the people on the rest of our agenda, so if you would, please come forward. Identify yourself and tell us what you're here for.
Tom Sullivan, West Yarmouth. Unfortunately, this year, for the first time in many years, I couldn't attend town meeting due to an illness. But I did watch it on TV, and I do have a comment about, a comment that was made at town meeting, at the beginning of the town meeting, by a town moderator. Mr. Horgan made a statement about town members tending to pick and choose the articles you want to speak on because you could be ineffective if you speak too often. Those are general facts, that is out of line for a town moderator to make a statement like that. The town meeting is for the people of the town to go. This guy should never have made that. I think it was a personal statement, and I think maybe he should apologize for it. Second item, I'm going to stay within three minutes. You talked last week about your school committee, about the new agreement you're trying to get through. You're sending it over to the school committee. I think Eric hit the nail on the head. You've been trying to get this deal for seven, deal done for seven years, and as a taxpayer in this town, I'm fed up with it. It's time to get out of the regional school district. If the school committee puts it out to a town vote, Dennis will reject it, Yarmouth might approve it. Where are you? You're back to square one. You have to have both towns approve it. So that's that. That's where, my opinion on that. On Vineyard Wind, I attended the sighting hearing at Barnstable High School, and a couple of things that come out on that meeting that I didn't know, and I don't think a lot of people knew. This trench in Lewis Bay, that they want to dig, is going to be 800 meters wide. You put that in feet, that's 2,624 feet wide. That's a lot of displacement in Lewis Bay. It's 2,000 feet wide, that's what they want to put in. They show pictures of the culvert that could come in on the streets in Yarmouth. They're being designed to be added on so multiple lines can come in. This is something that I didn't see, didn't hear, or even being discussed. And three, the best part about that, I looked at the map, which you might see here tonight, it looks, appears to me, they want to put those cables up around the rotary on Higgins Coral Road, which was blocked off. Up in that area, there are water wells in there, and they want that cable to come out where the DPW is. There's a well in there, and there were years ago that well had a problem with salt contamination. That's a Zone 1 protection zone, and I don't think the town should approve something like that. And just down from Higgins Coral Road, as it turns to go to Anseld Harret to the left, that's also a Zone 1, and Zone 2 Water District is in there. Because when I was with the DAV, we looked at buying land in there, but we found out we're restricted because it is a water protection zone. All right? And your agenda item tonight, you've got a water agreement with you from the Town of Barnstable to sell water to them. One item caught my eye is that the Town of Barnstable agreed to have Barnstable town employees help the tree warden here in the Town of Yarmouth. Great offer. But the Town of Yarmouth is going to have to foot the bill for a minimum of four hours overtime. I don't think we should be footing any bill for overtime. They should be grateful that we're actually selling them the water we are. That's in your agreement in front of you tonight, and I caught that up. I don't think that, that section should be taken out. All right?
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Is there other public comment? Vita?
There was, there were some very good suggestions made on trying to shorten the town meeting last, at the last meeting, and I would just like to add a couple of specifics. I think it would help, be very helpful if, in the budgeting process, you were allow, you were to allow more time for the taxpayers to participate in that. It seems to me, it's a first reading, second reading, oh, well, now we're all set about this, and that the taxpayers practically have no chance to participate in it. We have to be able to know what will be on the budget in terms of, you know, before we get to the meeting. And I think the taxpayer participation is really very helpful. The other part that it would be helpful also to be a part of during the process would be these other, other projects like the housing, public housing development, and, and the drive-in, the boardwalk and such, you know. At the last meeting, I really would have wanted to say something when the presentation was done by the drive-in people, but I don't have, I didn't have a chance. And I think it's not very helpful, and they seem to be already towards the very end. I mean, you guys, you haven't taken a formal vote, but it seems like it's all the way down there already. And we're talking about a $10 million boardwalk, for God's sakes. I think, you know, we need a little bit more time for, for the taxpayer input before it's time to print the warrant. Now, as for the Vineyard Wind situation, I would highly recommend that you put some time on the agenda and invite Attorney Charles McLaughlin from Hyannis or the Town of Barnstable. He participated in a number of the lawsuits that were filed to support the Save Our Sound people during the years, and he is so familiar with what would be happening in Lewis Bay. It's, it's just amazing. He did a, well, he was, it was in the form of a question, questions, I guess, but he took about 15 minutes trying to get, you know, these people to start thinking about the various and sundry things. And he's, he's, I think it would be very helpful for you to, and for the, the people of Yarmouth, to see what is exactly involved in this project.
Okay. Thank you, Vita. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I see two people in the back.
Good evening. My name is Susan Britton, and I'm from West Yarmouth. I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to comment on the proposed host agreement that you all may have to contemplate signing. The final route, as you know, for this, for the Vineyard Wind project has not been determined, and many people in this room are hoping that this host agreement will never have to be signed, and that Vineyard Wind ends up going and making landfall at Quillville Beach and not coming through our precious Lewis Bay. I want to confine my comments tonight to two major categories in the host agreement. One is definitions, or lack of definitions. The draft copy that I saw contains many phrases that are not defined, and ultimately, for those of you that are lawyers, you know that that can end up being just a huge problem if you ever end up in disagreement or dispute with Vineyard Wind. For example, the use of the term "other town-owned land" is never defined. Reasonable mitigation, not only is it not defined, it is not anywhere stated in the agreement who determines what is reasonable. Commercial operation, not defined. The word "patch" is even in there. They're going to patch a road, or patch, it's either a road or a sidewalk. Again, not defined. As you work your way through the agreement, I would urge you to be a little more precise in not only demanding definitions, but in the, in the, in the issues that require judgment, who actually is going to make the final decision. The second category of comments I want to make is on the financial terms of the, of the agreement. There are many, many. The $1 million for the sidewalk, if, if the $1 million doesn't buy the town a sidewalk from the rotary to 28, the agreement should say that there will be a sidewalk from the rotary to 28. Not a $1 million worth, but a sidewalk regardless of the cost. But the real, the real nugget in, in the agreement is this so-called cash payment that Vineyard Wind is going to make to the town. As I mentioned before, when I appeared before you in January, that cash payment is broken into two pieces, taxes and then what I would call fresh money, or new money, which is the difference between what they're going to pay in taxes, and $450,000, which by the way, is the exact same sum that Cape Wind offered 10 years ago. So one would think there would be a little more, even if you just adjusted for CPI, it would be more than $450,000. In any event, the taxes, I believe the taxes should be a separate paragraph entirely. They're going to pay that regardless. Why that is part of this lump sum payment, and supposedly they're supposed to be getting brownie points for paying taxes, is, is just a notion I just kind of endorse. Not only that, but the taxes are based on personal property as opposed to real estate tax. Why are they being taxed, this, this project being taxed as a personal property rate and not a real estate rate? That I don't understand. The $450,000, the difference is, it's supposed to be fresh money that they're going to give to the town, and then the town is supposed to be authorized to spend it however they want. There's also the issue, again tied to money, is this issue of excess, excess capacity. The agreement clearly states that the, without, quite frankly, any qualification from the board, they are going to be allowed to build in excess capacity, number one. You have nothing to say about it. Number two, you won't get any extra compensation for the excess capacity. That is clearly stated in the agreement. Why anyone would agree to that, I don't know. Also in the agreement is, is an echo from the 2007 agreement, which is, they call it privileged and confidential. The 2007 agreement basically said you all couldn't talk about it at all, but the notion is the same, that once you sign this agreement, it is privileged and confidential, and no one's supposed to know about it. Overall, the, the proposal favors the private sector over the citizens, it diminishes the authority of the board. I would urge you again, until a final decision is made about where the final piece of this route is, we would urge you, I speak for my neighborhood association plus others along the bay, not to sign anything until the final, until the final dog dies, and the final determination is made about where the, where the, the final, where they're going to make landfall. Two final points.
Can I ask you to wrap, really wrap up? That's, you know, we're, we have a full agenda.
Yes, I will. Just two final points, Mr. Chairman. One is, we want to, we want to make, remind you all, Lewis Bay is a tourist, recreational, residential jewel for the Cape. It drives the economic, it drives a lot of economy on the Cape. Please don't let it become an industrial site. And then finally, back to our favorite theme, the ecology, the environmental damage, unintended consequences are inevitable. No matter what is said here tonight by either party, you all can't determine how, how damaged the bay is going to be. The only way to protect that bay is to keep cables out of the bay. Thank you. I'm sorry to put that to the ground.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments.
Thank you for your indulgence.
We appreciate your comments, believe me. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Marcus Buckley. I live in Yarmouth Port in Comerquit Heights. My reason for coming before you this evening has to do with the proposed intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Barnstable to purchase water from the Town of Yarmouth. While the issue that I want to speak about doesn't relate directly to that, it does have to do with water supply. I'd written to Ms. Post, Mr. Knappick, and Tom Flores from Barnstable back in April, objecting to the fact that those of us who live in Yarmouth Port are paying Town of Barnstable, excuse me, Barnstable Fire District water rates. When the intermunicipal agreement was signed between Yarmouth and the Barnstable Fire District in 2008, the rates were relatively the same. Since then, Barnstable has added sewage treatment, and the sewer rate has been added to the water rate, and as a result, we're paying almost two and a half times what a regular, excuse me, a regular, what a Yarmouth-supplied water recipient is paying. My neighbors and I have calculated, some, some people think that they've paid well over $2,000 since 2012, when, excuse me, $2,000 too much, since 2012 when the higher rates kicked in. We have asked via a couple of letters and emails for the selectmen to address this with the Water District, and we've received no response up to this point. We want to resolve this amicably. There were more than 40 households involved in all of this, and it, it just doesn't seem to make any sense to us. We pay our taxes in Yarmouth. Those of us with children have our, go to the Yarmouth schools, and yet we're paying for the Town of Barnstable's sewer rates. Understand again, the Fire District is different from the town. It's a quasi-governmental agency, but nonetheless, it's under the same purview overall. And as a result, we're just asking for some equity. We'd, we'd like a response from this board about why we've not heard back. And secondly, we were simply asked that you avoid any action on this proposed intermunicipal agreement tonight until you can resolve this other issue. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment?
Hi there. Jim Wolfe. I live in Yarmouth Port. I am not a politician. My brother is a politician, or he was, but I'm the different one. And it's really about my town and the great opportunity that we have here with the cable coming ashore, okay? This, I have been to the Ocean, the Siting Board meeting, I have been to the Ocean Energy Management meeting, so I've seen Vineyard Wind operate, and I feel like, you know, I work at Cape Air. We like to think that we're a community-oriented company. I think that this company is displaying incredible caring about the community that they're bringing this cable through. So I think that, you know, having listened so far to what people have said, I would say, negotiate for the town as hard as we can to get the best deal that we can. Just the way the utilities run through our towns, this cable may and should, I think, run through our town, and there is a tremendous benefit for our town. And a little story I will tell, in terms of the community. I live on a small road, goose neck road, there's only three houses on the road, it's a public road. There, there are some older ladies who live in, in their houses alone. And since I moved in four years ago, I, you know, we sort of started caretaking for this lady who lived down the street because she kind of lived in a, in a hollow in the woods, and every time there was any kind of power disruption, she would be our responsibility. You know, she had a nephew who lived in town, but basically, as an example of what this company is thinking about, you know, the technology, not to move too fast into the future, but the technology of energy storage and houses being able to operate when they, when the power goes down. You know, this fund, what's it called? What's the name of that fund that they have? Does anybody know? I should know. There's a fund which is to basically take care of lower-income people with providing energy storage. This company has made a significant contribution to them. And when I think around town, our town, I would emphasize the positive aspect of this, that if we somehow, you know, fight to stop it as if it is the, the Cape Wind project, we're going to be throwing a gift horse right out the door. That fund is going to help people who are living alone, who are elderly, and we know the power goes out. And when that happens, possibly they're going to have energy storage that is going to take them through those two days or those three days screwed up on the wall of their house. This is the technology of the future. This company understands the future, and they also understand caring about people. So as a member of this town, I would urge the selectmen and whoever else is involved in the process to negotiate hard for the town with a company that is going to be, I believe, fairly open and honest in negotiations. It's a long-term deal, they've got a long-term reputation that they're building in this industry, they're going to want to develop wind up and down the coasts of this country and around the world, and this is part of their business strategy, to be good, to be a caring corporate citizen. So let's not go into this with our hair raised up about things that have happened in the past. They don't have the issues of the visual. I do think Lewis Bay is a significant issue that we, and there was a lot of environmental review, there was a lot of sitting down with the fishermen and talking that this company is initiating, and I think we should keep our guard up, but we should proceed with the realization that, I went to a meeting not that long ago where the Dennis Yarmouth District was going to cut all the social workers. I mean, money is a significant thing going forward. I'm not going to talk to you about 20 years down the road how this town will look foolish if it doesn't get involved in wind power. That may or may not be true, well, it is going to be true if, you know, it's, it's happening. But what I will talk to you about is prudent moving forward. We're not talking about rocket science here, we're talking about bringing a cable ashore and in an environmentally sensitive fashion, getting it over to where it needs to get in Barnstable, and meanwhile, having income coming in for the next 30 years, as well as, you know, yes, I agree with the woman who spoke before, if a sidewalk is only going to get halfway there, no. So write the agreement so that we, we make sure that if you rip up a sidewalk, you put it, put it back the way it was. So, anyway, it's a great opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, so let's move forward and negotiate however that process goes, and let's not get too mired in this can't come through our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good comments. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We have limited time available. We have to move on with our agenda. I'm going to allow one more speaker, and that's it.
I'll be, I'll be quick. As someone who cares about energy issues and about the long-term well-being of this town, I respect the ability of this board to be able to negotiate a beneficial contract for us. This company is coming in here proposing significant dollars that this town needs. There is no agreement, as I understand, that is being put forth. They had put forth suggestions for a draft, taken off the table. It seems to me you're going to be starting from scratch based on where the Siting Board says this should come in. I respect your ability to negotiate what we need, bearing in mind that we're not talking about minimal dollars, we're talking significant amounts of money that hopefully you guys can negotiate for the best interests of the town. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We can't continue to take public comments this evening.
I have a comment about the school, and I also have one other comment that I'd like to end with. I came.
We have, lots of people raising their hands. Chris, we need to move on with our agenda. We have, we have a schedule that we need to keep up with.
Give her three minutes.
Chris, in deference to your, your background, I will.
I promised to speak very quickly. I've been known to do that before. I wanted to report that the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School was held, their graduation was held on Saturday. It was a very exciting event for more than 140 students. I had the privilege of giving out the diplomas. Also, I will report that five young men and women are joining, joining the military from there, the Marines, the Air Force, and the Army, and that in addition, their keynote speaker was a graduate of the class of 2013, who then went to WPI and is now, for the past year, been working as a jet engine engineer for Pratt &amp; Whitney, and he came and gave a really compelling speech to our students who are going on to careers, college, and more. One thing I want to note very quickly about Vineyard Wind is, the other night, there was a political meeting down on Route 28 in Yarmouth, where there were a number of protesters, none of which you will see in the newspaper, having been reported upon. There was a lot of horn honking, a lot of waving. We held, there were held, signs held up like this about "We Love Lewis Bay." The other sign that was held up that was Baker Loves, his former campaign manager, hired as the lobbyist to promote and to get this project approved. "It doesn't make sense, the Brayton Point program that would not involve digging up a neighborhood and a community is extraordinary." When people talk about the tax revenue that's going to come to this town, you have to understand, I did a very careful assessment of all of the houses that surround the bay, and I'm talking about people whose properties actually touch the water. I'm not talking about people a house or two back from the water like me. Of the 135 of them, they pay this town $2.1 million in taxes every single year. The little bit of money the Vineyard Wind is proposing on this supposedly is going to be such a tax boon to us, is not. I have serious problems after reading and becoming an interested party in the filing, that there are issues in this community for not only just the bay that we started out with our concerns on, but all of the land issues. And I urge you not to be suckered in by a few dollars strewn down Route 28 or down Berry Avenue on this whole project. Thank you, and I'll leave it at that for shortness of time.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. I think a number of you are probably here with regard to the Vineyard Wind item on the agenda. We are going to talk at some point about asking Vineyard Wind to come before the public, and the select board members will be available to, to come to that meeting as well, and we'll, we're going to talk about asking them to answer, or to ask, answer questions from the public directly, and to make presentations so that everybody can be equally informed. So we're going to move ahead with our agenda at this point.
Make a point of order on appearing to the public. A statement was made that there is no wind energy.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can I, can I please ask you to sit down?
There's an.
We're going to proceed with our agenda. Thank you.
There's an enforceable statute in place with.
Please.
Wind.
Sir.
Wind.
Can I ask you, please, to sit down?
I will, but.
Thank you.
I think the public has a right to know that there's.
All right. We're going to move on with the Special Alcohol and Entertainment License Amendments and possible vote. Mike?
Thank you. Phil, do you want to come up and participate in this? We have three matters, actually, that they're all interrelated and should be fairly brief. The first one, and Phil, feel free to comment, Town Council, I don't know if he's here. He was. We had met today about this. The first one was a BYOB policy that's really obsolete. It was adopted in November 16th of 2010, and it limited BYOBs to nonprofit organizations having a pouring license under Chapter 138. We've had a series of discussions involving Chris and Dan, myself, Linda Hill, Officer Phil Magnuson, and the consensus seems to be, in Town Council today, that we really don't want to be in the BYOB business. We don't, I mean, these are really non-licensed establishments that bring their own alcohol and serve it and have their own rules and so forth. If somebody wants to come on the town property, that would be treated differently. They'd either have to get a one-day license or come before us to get whatever permissions that they need. But we don't really feel that there's any upside for the town to be regulating BYOBs in, in private establishments, and we're recommending that the board basically rescind that policy. Phil, do you want to comment further on that?
This is something that's come to light in my discussions with Linda Hill. She's the one that has to deal with the inquiries. This policy's very confusing. In my view, it's contrary to state law. Town Council and I agree that we can't be, true BYOB, where someone brings a bottle to an establishment, sits down and drinks their own bottle, the town lacks the authority to regulate, regulate that in the absence of a town bylaw, which we do not have. We could regulate it in restaurants that don't have a liquor license, we have chosen not to. I don't see any reason to. So that's the. So that's the true BYOB aspect. We're trying to regulate something that we lack the authority to regulate, and I don't see any reason to try to regulate it. If we want to, we need to pass a town bylaw. The other aspect is that Paragraph 5 of the old policy allows an organization to buy alcohol, bring it to the site, and then distribute it to its guests. That, to me, sounds like an activity that requires some sort of an alcohol license. And we're granting a permit for an activity which in many circumstances should be licensed. There's a state statute, Chapter 41 of Chapter 138, I'm sorry, Section 41, Chapter 138, which says that delivery of alcohol anywhere but in a private residence is prima facie evidence of a sale. And then under Section 56, you may be arrested for an unlawful sale. And Section 56 also commands police officers to enforce this law. It's one of the few criminal laws that actually says the police shall enforce it. Even the murder statute doesn't say the police shall enforce it, but this one does. So we're issuing this town permission to do something which may put people afoul of state law. And so the consensus is that this policy is of dubious, you know, legal virtue and it doesn't accomplish anything. There's no state law that says people can't bring their own bottle somewhere and drink it if the person who owns the property cares to allow it. That's the first part. The second part has to do with town-owned land. Town-owned land, you have the proprietary control over the land as the Board of Selectmen. You can enforce whatever policies and requirements for alcohol on that town-owned land that you want. And that's Part 2, which Linda and I worked on together and she came up, I think, with the final draft. And that is to address the use of town property like Bray Farm, Senior Center, other places like that. And to require insurance, licensing, it would only, the alcohol could only be served if a state-licensed caterer. And a state-licensed caterer under Section 12(c), it's not a license where you issue, it comes from the state, they have insurance, they have tips-trained servers, they bring the alcohol with them, they serve it, and then they take the leftover alcohol home. They're a little bit on the pricey side, but it's really the neatest approach for someone who wants to put on a wedding somewhere. So we would allow that on town-owned property. The other type of service we would allow would be a Section 12 special, a Section 14 special license, what we call a one-day license. And those come before you and we have requirements for those, tips-training, an insurance policy to protect the town, and that those would be available to people. And that would be the only condition under which we think that you should allow alcohol to be brought to and consumed on town property. This is a suggestion, this is your responsibility, the town-owned property, but this approach seems to make sense. I know it's a little bit complex, but I hope I haven't followed up.
And we don't have to have some kind of ironclad policy about alcohol on town property. We can, in the lack of the BYOB, deal with those applications on a case-by-case basis, whatever we think is.
Well, the people come to Linda and she needs guidance as far as what to tell them. To tell them, look, you need a special, you need a special Section 14 license or you need a state caterer. So she needs to know, you know, which way to.
On the one days, yeah. So, I guess the first item before we get to the one days would be if anyone wants to make a motion to rescind the current BYOB policy.
Can we have some discussion first?
Sure. Well, we don't have a motion on the floor to, we should have the motion and then a second and then the discussion. Anyone want to make that motion? Rescind the current BYOB policy?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
For discussion purposes. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, now we can have the discussion. Tracy?
I'm just curious, so what you're saying is that in the absence of this BYOB and nonprofit can continue doing business as they are now, having BYOB functions, just not under this policy?
Absolutely. So long as they do not have a liquor license, they could choose to allow people to come to their venue and bring their own bottle of wine and attend the venue and drink their own alcohol.
And has that changed? Because I'm looking at Mr. Nash and I'm remembering the cultural center was, I think, one of the reasons why, and I know that they utilize this on their Saturday night dances, why this was put into place. I'm wondering what's changed in the statute since?
Nothing has changed, and I'm a little bit mystified by this back in 2010. There has never been any state law or any town law which would prohibit people from going to the cultural center and bringing a bottle of wine so long as the cultural center chose to allow that.
I think, if I could provide a little background, this one may have been done for the Bass River Yacht Club.
And that's the other location. And my recommendation to them would be, they are prime candidates for a club license. We have two club licenses in town. The fee is reduced, and once they get a, it's not as much of a fee as a commercial license. And once they get a club license, then they can buy and sell alcohol to their members and, under certain circumstances, to guests, under our regulations.
But what you're telling me is, even without this policy, they're allowed to do it? Even a business, you said, if they allow it, they could do it?
Absolutely. If someone has an artist studio and people want to come in and bring a bottle of wine to drink while they're painting, absolutely. There's no state law prohibiting that, no town bylaw. This policy purports to prohibit something that, again, we don't have the authority to prohibit without a town bylaw. We don't have.
So, but we've been allowing, well, I shouldn't say we've been allowing, we have, we allow liquor licenses on town property now, a one-day.
Yes, we do.
Those are one days.
The one days. And the other aspect that Linda has suggested, which I'm in agreement as on, is we simplify the notice provisions for the one-day license to require only notice by certified mail. Presently, we require, we.
You mean regular mail?
By regular mail, by first-class mail. And then the applicant would file an affidavit of service that they've sent it in. We presently require advertisement in the paper and return receipt mail, which is very cumbersome and very expensive. It's not covered by the state, it's not required by the state statute. So we can simplify those notice requirements in order to facilitate people to use town property if that's what you want to do, for weddings or functions and things like that.
To address a point Eric made, we cannot, by means of a BYOB policy, allow Bass River or any other organization to do what they would need a club license to do. We can't do that, they would, if they.
Yeah, I want to distinguish two things. True BYOB, where you bring your own bottle as opposed to someone buying it and distributing it. Yes, I went to a party at Bass River Yacht Club last fall, very nice party, brought a bottle of wine. They can do that regardless of this policy, and this policy doesn't help them, it doesn't hurt them, it just causes confusion.
We're good at that.
So is this policy, if we adopt that, going to be rewritten, the statement at the beginning includes reference to BYOB or brown bag and then?
We're going to rescind the entire.
No, we're going to rescind the entire thing. We're not going to get, no, we're not going to get involved with BYOB. If somebody wants to do one at land other than town land, as long as they bring their own alcohol, the town won't have any involvement in that. This would not prohibit the town at a future date from going to town meeting if you should desire, there's some reason why you would want to get involved in this, and pass a bylaw to regulate BYOBs.
So this entire policy would be removed?
Correct.
And so, all right.
But a lot of, a lot of what is happening already under BYOBs, they don't need a policy to continue to do it. They can do it anyway.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the floor? Mike?
A motion, a second, yes. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. The second thing we want to talk about is the one-day license. And I had, I talked to town council about this, Phil, and have a couple minor amendments to it, but I'll let you go ahead and discuss what we want to do and then I'll tell you what the minor amendments are.
Okay, we had a number of discussions, and this is the final draft, which I only actually just saw today. But it's pretty much what we've talked about. And that is, we would allow people to serve alcohol with that special, Section 14 one-day license. They'd need to have a liquor liability certificate of insurance to protect the town. Their servers would need to be tips-trained or trained under another serve-training program. They'd need to provide a floor plan, they'd have to pay the license fee. They'd have to come to the Board of Selectmen meeting for review, so it would be an agenda item on your, at your board. And they would have to provide an affidavit of a butter notification which would be sent out 10 days prior to the meeting, first-class mail. So we simplified and streamlined the notification process.
Okay, the initial comments I wanted to make were, and they're minor, on Paragraph 1, where it says "Town of Yarmouth as insured," it's insert the words "an additional insured" because obviously the person that's doing the event's going to be insured and the town's going to be the additional insured. Under 2, what I recommended after you named the specific programs is to say, or other program approved by the Board of Selectmen, so that if in the future we approve something, we won't have to go back and amend this to include that particular program. And then after the word in Number 6, where it says that the notice will be via first-class mail, I would add postage prepaid. Because while I trust the integrity of most applicants and most attorneys, if some letter went out and wasn't received because it didn't have postage, somebody would have an argument that that was not really required. All that was required was it was sent first-class. So, the courts make you put that language in any kind of certificate that you serve on another attorney, that you have to say, "I served it by first-class mail, postage prepaid." So I would add those three amendments. The only other comment that I would make to the board is that, from my discussions with Linda, is that she wants to make this process a little bit more user-friendly. Some of these butter lists have pages and pages of people that have to be notified. And certified mail is a few cents shy of $7 apiece. And not only that, but, you know, writing up the green cards and everything is pretty labor-intensive. So what they would do is they would get the butters list, as they always did, they would go out by regular mail, and then the person that is serving them, whether it be the attorney or the applicant themselves, would sign an affidavit which basically says that they served those notices by first-class mail, postage prepaid, to the attached to butters, the people named in the attached to butters list. And they'd sign that document under the pains and penalties of perjury. And that's really how the legal community is required to act with, in terms of notice with courts. So it'd be the same, the same type of thing. So I don't know how you feel about, that's the general intent.
So what are you asking us?
So I'd like to know if somebody with the three amendments I mentioned would make a motion to adopt the, what should we call this, Phil, policy with respect to Section 14 one-day licenses.
Well, if I could just interject, we would also allow consumption of alcohol with the Section 12 caterers' licenses.
Correct, that's already in there, under Section 12(c).
Yeah.
I was not changing any of that, I was just, my motion, the intent of my motion is to accept this as printed, with the exception of adding the words "an additional" before "insured" in Paragraph 1, adding at the end of Paragraph 2, "or other program approved by the Board of Selectmen," and in Paragraph 6, after "first-class mail," add the words "postage prepaid," otherwise to accept this as proposed.
So moved.
Very second?
Second.
For discussion.
Okay, we have any, anyone want to be heard? Tracy?
So, this is going to be a Yarmouth Board of Selectmen policy? I think we need to make sure that that's clear, that it's a, it's a policy. My other question is, with the catering license, what you're saying here is that if they have a catering license, a private event, even if it's on town-owned land, there's no need for any process? There's no process needed at all?
Yes, under the, under Section 12(c), the only process under state law is that they have to notify the police chief, I think, within a certain number of days before the event.
So if we have somebody who wants to come at the seaside festival and they have their caterer's license, they can serve alcohol and it has, there's no public process?
Well, first of all, it can only be a private event with a caterer, can't be open to the public.
So private means you have to pay to get in?
No, it means closed with a guest list. Maybe a wedding, private function.
Closed with a guest list.
It's only for a private function. Number 2, they need the permission of the landowner. So if they're coming to Bray Farm or Flax Pond or some other town property, they need, still need to make arrangements to rent that site from the town.
But not in a hearing?
But not in a hearing. There would be no hearing before the board for the alcohol license. We'd just get a notice that a state-licensed caterer is coming to town.
And is that customary practice in most communities?
It is. Again, it's state law, and we've had a number come in, we get the notice, we haven't had any problems with them. And I said it's one of the, one of the neatest ways to do it because the liquor comes with the caterer, the caterer serves it, they, under state law, they have to have trained servers, and then when they leave, they take the leftover liquor with them. Whereas when you have a special license, you have to have it delivered, you have to store it, you have to have your event, then you have to get it back.
No, I understand that, and I think that, you know, we've been pretty specific, even for the people who use Taylor Braid, to use certified caterers. I guess my question just is, with public notification for a butters, so who's, so if there was an issue or a complaint? I'm just trying to think about the potential for what could happen. So they go there and they have to provide the police department the list?
No. The caterer just gives notice that they're coming to town and the address. And usually comes to the chief, the chief sends it down to me. It could be on private land, and of course, then if there's a noise complaint or anything else, we deal with it just like any other complaint on private land.
But this is just for public land, right?
And again, on your, on town land, they would have already made arrangements to use the town land. There would have been no liquor hearing, but they would have had to make arrangements to rent the land. Now, if they were going to have entertainment, they would have to have made arrangements for an entertainment license.
Okay.
I also call the board's attention to the last, very bottom of this page where it defines what a private event is. It says, "It's not open to the public for purposes of a caterer's 12(c) license. It's a private event which, A, has a host, B, has restricted access to invited guests only, and C, was not publicly advertised." Those are the criteria to determine whether it's a private event versus a public event.
Caterers are only allowed to serve at private events. Okay.
All right, so, do we have any further discussion on this? So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. And there was an entertainment license piece 2, I think, Phil.
The last two pages in your packet.
These weren't in our packet though, were they?
Okay, there was a prior entertainment policy of August 11th, 95, and I guess the thinking was to rescind that and then adopt the one that dated June 5th, 2018. Do you want to speak to that, Phil?
The entertainment license is really more Linda's bailiwick than mine. I think her intent here is to simplify the process, to make them come in during the meet with the first Board of Selectmen, the first year of the event, and the same event and subsequent year can be approved by the Board of Selectmen on a consent agenda.
Right, and the affidavits.
The notice for the first, for the first year.
The affidavits of service would be sufficient to verify the first-class mail mailing as opposed to the present requirement of certified mail notice. And this is limited to outdoor events. I called Linda on that and asked her why that was the case, and she said, "Because most indoor events for entertainment are going to be accompanied by an application for a liquor license and herd at the same time." So there wasn't any real need to have any special guidance on the indoor entertainment licenses. So what I would be asking the board to do, first of all, would be to So what I would be asking the board to do, first of all, would be to, I just want to make a motion to rescind the entertainment license policy dated August 11, 1995.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Just a point of order. Why would we do that rather than just adopt, the, the new policy says amended. Why wouldn't we just adopt an amendment to the previous policy? I mean, I suppose either way.
I don't, yeah, it says amended June, June 5.
But the policy code and number is the same on both.
That's fine. I don't really have a problem doing it that way either.
I, I don't have, I didn't know if one was more technically correct than the other.
No, I think that's fine, Eric. If, if, I think if we vote on the amended policy of June 5, by implication, it will supersede the previous one. So do we have a motion to adopt the amended entertainment license policy dated June 5, 2018?
So moved.
Does it have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously as well. I think that does it, Phil, for the ones we needed to do. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a hearing for change of manager for the 99 Restaurant. Is there a representative from 99 here? Thank you. How are you this evening?
Very well.
Good. Can you tell us what you're here for?
I'm here to become licensee on the 99 and 14 Berry Ave.
Okay. I've looked at your paperwork. It's fine. It's in order. You met with Phil Magnuson, and he sent an email saying that you're one of the most qualified candidates for managing a business of this type that he has seen. And that recommendation obviously goes a long way. So is there anything that you would like to say?
Oh, I don't really have anything else to say.
Okay. Do we have a motion then to approve the change of manager for the 99 Club?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Good to go. Good luck. Okay. And the next item is a special alcohol and entertainment license for Allison Begin, a wedding at Taylor Bray Farm in Yarmouth Port. Are you Alice?
I'm Allison. Hi.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thanks.
Since this is a public, technically a public hearing, I'm going to read the notice into the record, and then you could tell us what you want us to do on this. The Yarmouth Port of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Allison, is it Begin?
Begin.
Begin, Begin, sorry, for special all-alcohol and entertainment licenses for a wedding reception at Taylor Bray Farm, 108 Bray Farm Road North, Yarmouth Port, Mass. on Saturday, July 21, 2018, between the hours of 3:00 and 11:00 p.m. Entertainment will include recorded music, amplification, and dancing until 10:00 p.m. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 5, 2018, in the hearing room at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted in the Selectmen's office until 4:30 p.m. on Friday, June 1, 2018. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay, Allison, why don't you tell us what you want us to do?
I don't get married.
You want to get, you want to get married, first of all, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Mark doesn't have any opinions.
I just want to know why, I just want to know why his name's not on the application. Is she still keeping her options open?
Um.
I'm just kidding.
All right. So you're going to have the wedding that goes to 11:00 p.m., but the entertainment's going to stop at 10. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And you're going to have this catered?
Yes.
That's going to be by?
Fiddlesticks.
Excuse me?
That's, it's called Fiddlesticks, Heidi.
It's, yeah, there's just some paperwork in there. On Oliver, Oliver's?
So Oliver's, they're doing the liquor. And then Fiddlesticks is doing the food.
Okay.
She's a food truck, using the food truck as her mobile kitchen.
All right. So you're already set. The guest lists are out, right? So nothing else we can do except say yes, right?
Yeah.
All right. I don't have any questions. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Phil?
Did you say all alcohol?
Is this, let me see.
Special alcohol.
Wait a minute. Special all-alcohol and entertainment, yeah.
I hate to pour cold water on this, but an all-alcohol special license can only be granted to a nonprofit. Anyone can get wine and malt beverages.
Yeah, but I, I.
What's the difference?
If you're a nonprofit, it's not a corporation. You can get an all-alcohol license. Anybody else?
Phil, you're the partying place. I'm sorry.
I, I get that, but isn't malt beverages don't include hard liquor? Is that what you're saying?
Unfortunately, I have one copy, but this is a printout of the ABCC rule on, on Section 14 licenses.
All application for special.
And it's just, the statute says the same thing.
The question is, though, how strictly you read the words nonprofit. Does it mean you have to be an organized entity? Or do you mean, does it mean you can't be doing it for, to make money? I'm not sure I read that as restrictively as you do. I talked to town council about that today. Jay, you, do you have an opinion on that? Let's get the hired guns up here. This is important. Someone's getting married.
Mr. Stone has it.
Yeah.
I may have something else here. Find the malt beer and wine.
Beer with us.
Yeah, what, what's interesting is that one-day licenses, I think you're reading whether or not the ABCC requires an organized nonprofit, which they didn't say.
Right.
It just said it can't be, it obviously just can't be for profit. It is, it is not uncommon for towns to grant one-day licenses for, for organizations that are not for profit, but may not have the cachet of a 501(c)(3) or Article of Organization under Chapter 180 or, or otherwise. I would be, I would be happy to be in, to see and review any ABCC guidance on it. This here, it does state non, a not-for-profit, but it doesn't further define it as, as how it may be organized. I think the issue there is that it's a not, that it couldn't be a for-profit corporation perhaps under, but there's, I'm not aware of any specific guidance on that perhaps, Phil.
Yeah. I mean, I certainly can understand Phil's point if he wants, if he's, if he's going to read that literally. But I, I don't read it that way. I read it that all alcohol licenses for special events cannot be granted for a profit-motivated event.
They certainly have had every opportunity in the statute to use precise terms, such in that, at the time of the adoption of the statute and since, that there's plenty of laws relating to, to Chapter 180 and the other nonprofit statutes. And there's references all over the Massachusetts General Laws for that. I, I can't sit here and tell you, though, in fairness to Phil, that I'm aware of guidance that specifically states that. We talked about it earlier today. I haven't had the benefit of, of Phil's research on it, though, either. I'm not aware of a guidance document from ABCC that, that says it has to be a formally organized nonprofit corporation. And like I said, I am aware of some other types of entities that, that have been granted one-day licenses.
You are aware of them, yeah. Maybe the board can refresh my, but haven't we granted all alcohol licenses before the weddings at Bray Farm? Isn't this kind of consistent with the position we've taken in the past?
No, this is, I think this is the third one that we've done. And this, this has never come up in the past, so.
Well.
Can we have a motion?
Yeah.
Well, we have to go to the public.
It's a public hearing, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a public hearing. So does anybody want to speak in favor of this application? We have a gentleman, and we have two people coming up. Wow. Come on up. Now, when you say in favor, you got to say some good stuff.
Joyce Flynn, I'd just like to say, as someone who once planned her own reception, that I would strongly suggest that you give these people the benefit of tradition while the, the legalities of the actual nonprofit status are being investigated. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. It's Bob Clark from the Taylor Bray Farm, the nonprofit who coordinates the dates with the wedding couples. One here that we're aware of, and we've had a number of them, and they've always been open, full, as the thing says, all alcohol on it. And it's been the precedent that's been established down there. And we've never had any problems as a result of it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bob. It's, your comments are appreciated. Do we have anyone that wants to speak in opposition?
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
I would point out, Mr. Chairman, that the license premise is a nonprofit organization.
That's a good point. So maybe you fall a little bit on the ground and.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
I know he has, you have the.
Cards. We have a motion to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? You're all set. Thank you and have a great day.
Have fun.
You got a lot of fans. Do you invite these people?
They're on the guest list.
Okay. Do we have any other liquor? We have one more, right?
I think we have one more, Mike. Yes. Yeah.
Oh, the infallible.
So Taylor Bray's done. Oh, yeah, okay. Next one is Sandbar Management, Inc., DBA Shark Bites. I think I saw Attorney Singer here. I think he's on that one. Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I read the public notice, and I know I've read the name, is it Marama?
Yes.
All right, you got it right. Okay, good. I'll read the notice and, and to the record. And then Attorney Singer, you can go forward at that point. Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Sandbar Management, Inc., doing business with Shark Bites, Joseph Marama, manager, 518 Route 28 West Yarmouth, for an alteration of premise to add a new outdoor concession area with a food trailer, restrooms, and an additional 100 outdoor seats to their existing seasonal all-alcoholic, all-alcoholic restaurant license. This is an extension of the existing outdoor service area, which has 100 outdoor seats and four indoor seats. Shark Bites Restaurant is located within Cape Cod Inflatable Park. Sandbar Management, Inc. is expanding the air and water park as per Board of Appeals decision number 4705 to add the parcel located at 532 Route 28 West Yarmouth. Weekly and Sunday entertainment applications have also been filed to add to, to add this parcel to the current licenses. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 5, 2018, in the hearing room at the town offices, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The Board of Selectmen meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 Friday, June 1, 2018, in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Mr. Singer?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney and dentist board here on behalf of the applicant. With me is Joseph Marama, who is the principal of the applicant and also the manager at the premises. I did turn in the green cards and receipts because we unfortunately can't do it by an affidavit, as you were talking about in one of your earlier hearings. So you got all the paperwork in. There is a larger-sized plan down in front of me. You do all have. It's a little bit easier to see if you have the, the reduced-size plan. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this is, we've been before you before, and this is another expansion and reconfiguration of the park. It's on the east side. The new land is the land that was most form, most recently the Wings property. As you may recall, the back of what was the Wings property was taken into the park a couple of years ago. This is now the front of the Wings property. As you mentioned, it, we have been before, design review, site plan review, Board of Health and Board of Appeals. Everyone has reviewed and approved the project. What is being proposed, from the park point of view, is a new lazy river and water slide area, which is very visible on the plan. You can see the, the river oblong shape there. Also a reconfiguration of the water rides in back. The water rides are being reduced in number to the number that you see on the plan itself. That's the entertainment side. And then on, on the alcohol side, part of this proposal, and it's to the, if you're looking at the plan, to the left of the lazy river, there is a new proposed outdoor concession area, which would have food service, bathrooms, and a drink center. The drink center would ideally have alcohol service as an extension of what's already on the property. This is a licensed establishment. Right now, the main bar is in the restaurant building itself. No changes are proposed on the west side of the park. And this new area where the new licensing is being requested for the drink center is going to be the lazy river and the water park section, and it is going to be separately gated from the inside. And you can see that on the plan. There is a fence that basically runs up the middle of the park, and there is a proposed gate, as listed, to separate the two sides of the park for the purposes that we're here, you know, for the entertainment and for the alcohol. From a park point of view, this has resulted in another curb cut closure on Route 28. And as I'm sure you've seen, if you've driven by it, an extension of the landscaping, the berm, the fence, the vegetation, everything that's been, being done by Mr. Marama over the years at the site. There's going to be no lighting still on the water side. There is shielded exterior lighting on the air side of the park. Again, no changes to that. These are just repeating for you what is out there. The hours of operations, seasonal business, are remaining the same. The air park is open 10 to 10, April 1 through October 31. The water park's only open 10 to 6, and that's only open Memorial Day through Labor Day. And the lazy river is part of the water park portion, so that's part of the Memorial Day to Labor Day. And as I've said to every board I've been before, also good weather days. If it is too cold or it is too rainy, the water park is not going to be very well-used at all. If you have any questions for anything we've done for all the other boards, or regarding the service or the design, Mr. Marama or I would be happy to answer them. And we appreciate your review of both, the two applications to amend both the entertainment license as well as the liquor license. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Does anyone on the board have any questions they would like to ask? Tracy?
Public.
Oh, you're going to go to public first? Okay. Does anyone in the public have any comments, either for or against? I see none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It passes. Do we have a motion to grant the application in its entirety?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Good luck. I heard you're going to be featured on Chronicle.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. I think that concludes the licensing matters, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Caught right up.
We did. Great job, Mike. All right. We're going to move along at this point to the Vineyard Wind permitting presentation. This is an information-only session. And we have representatives from our town staff here, as well as our legal counsel, to update us on the proposals at this point. So why don't you introduce yourselves and open the meeting.
Good evening. I'm Carl Van Hoen, Director of the Division Natural Resources.
Kelly Grant, Conservation Administrator.
Town Council, Jay Teller.
Thank you.
Just to give you, just some brief information leading into this. Vineyard Wind is proposing to build an 800-megawatt wind farm about 30 miles south of Cape Cod. This was put forward and supported by government. This was put forward and supported by Governor Baker with the Energy Diversity Act in the summer of 2016, at which time they were looking for energy projects to be proposed. The process went forward, and on May 23, Vineyard Wind was chosen by the utilities or from the, to provide the utilities by the Office of, Executive Office of Energy and the Environment for an 800-megawatt wind farm. So the process is moving forward. We're here to go over the process. It's already started, and Kelly's going to give the overview of the process, and we'll be here to answer any questions as we go.
Great. Thank you. Kelly?
So this first slide just gives you a overview of the, all of the permit requirements for the project. So on the left-hand side, you've got all the different federal permitting requirements, and then on the right-hand side, the state and local permitting. So this is just to give you a visual, which you can refer to. So looking at the federal side to start off with, the lead agency for the National Environmental Policy Act is Boam, which is the Bureau of Energy, Ocean Energy Management. So the scope of this process is to ensure adherence with federal law and regulations. So that includes NEPA, Endangered Species Act, the Clean Air Act, Clean Water Act, among others. So in December of last year, Vineyard Wind submitted a construction and operations plan to Boam. They conducted a preliminary review of that plan, and there was a public comment period that was opened during the month of April. Following, or during that comment period, there were public meetings that were held on the Cape and the islands, as well as in other parts of Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And then, at the moment, the next stage of that process is that there's a third party engaged by Boam to put together a draft federal environmental impact statement. That draft should be released in the fall and will then be followed by another public comment period. Subsequent to that, the contracted firm will incorporate those public comments into a final environmental impact statement. At that point, Boam will do a final review and issue a decision. There won't be another public comment period after the issue of the final environmental impact statement. And that final decision is expected in the first quarter of 2019. So then, just a couple of other main items of permitting at the federal level is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who permit construction within waters of the U.S. And there's a public comment period that's expected sometime in the next six months for that process. And then there'll also be the U.S. National Marine Fisheries, looking at construction impacts to marine mammals, and there will be a public comment period during that as well. So with regard to the state permitting, the primary permitting process at the moment is under NEPA, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. This provides a broad environmental review, consisting of full-scale review of portions of the project that are in state waters or on state lands. So that's namely the Vineyard Wind connector, which is the transmission portion of the project. So the NEPA review involves consultation with a range of state agencies, including fisheries, endangered species, and then other environmental regulators. So an ENF, which is the Environmental Notification Form, was submitted to the state NEPA office in December of last year, which included an outline of the intent of the project, and that started a public comment period at that point, which continued for a month before a ENF certificate was issued to Vineyard Wind in February of this year. So following that certificate, Vineyard Wind generated their draft environmental impact report, and that was finished in April of this year and started a public comment period, which is currently open. And that current public comment period closes on June 8, so the end of this week. So following that comment period, they'll incorporate the public comments into a final environmental impact report. That will then trigger another public comment period before a final certification of that final environmental impact report. So at the same time, there's the Energy Facilities Board, sorry, Energy Facility Siting Board, which is going through citing and permitting through the state EFSP and the Department of Public Utilities. So there was a public statement hearing for that in March of 2018, and that process is expected to extend over the next several months as the board reviews the project. They'll hear testimony and ultimately issue a decision on the project. And the town of Yarmouth is an intervening party in that process, so they'll have the opportunity to participate. And then, just briefly looking at the regional permitting, Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard Commissions will be reviewing the project under their Development of Regional Impact And there is expected to be a public hearing sometime toward the end of the year for that, probably will likely time with the finalizing of that environmental impact report. And then we just have the local permitting, so there's obviously the, any community agreement that will include, you know, a review of project benefits and any mitigation, and the timeline for that is undetermined. And then ultimately, Yarmouth Conservation Commission will be reviewing the project. There's likely to be, with the timing as proposed at the moment, public hearings somewhere between November 2018 and March 2019. And then there will also be local permitting for street opening and grants of location, and that's planned for February to April of 2019. So then, just the final slide that we had was just to provide you with some information on the existing cables that exist in Nantucket Sound, and then just a slide, a diagram of the proposed Lewis Bay route for the cable connector. So if you have any questions on that.
Carl, did you want to add anything at this point?
Just to let you know, as Kelly stated, we have received an intervenor's status under the Siting Board. Jay will be our legal counsel for that process, and also, you know, as you're well aware of, we've already started the comment period with a submittal that was done several months ago. The comment period for the draft is coming up the end of the week, that I'm in the process of pulling together the comments. The document, the draft document, I was going to bring just for shock value and put it on the desk. It's about 10 inches thick, so I'm trying to pull as much comment and information out of there for the best interest of the town to present for signature. Since we did not have it available for this meeting, I would ask that the board either authorize Dan for the signature or yourself as chairman to sign it on behalf of the board once we are able to present it in the full format. It will be reemphasizing the already submitted comments under the draft.
Those were the NEPA comments?
Correct. We did receive comments on our initial submission, of which most of it was they were going to hold off moving forward with some of those studies that were asking for the information. I'm going to reemphasize that information again to hopefully see some movement on that. A lot of that information is really important to making an educated decision for you, the Board of Selectmen, as well as others.
All right. I think I'd like to open it up to the board for questions at this point on the update, and make, I think we've had a request for authorization to submit the letter to the state, and we'll, but first, let's open up for comments. Eric, do you want to start?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
I'm not sure where to start. So what, yeah, what we're trying to do tonight is just authorize the letter, the intervenus status letter to be signed. What is it exactly that you're looking for? I thought we were looking for the board's direction on whether or not we want to, are we taking this separately? Okay.
Yeah, there are two pieces to it, Tracy. One is the board's direction, but the immediate one that Carl mentioned is just to authorize Dan to submit a letter through the chair on behalf of the board and the town, which really just reemphasizes a lot of the points that we initially sent over in the initial comment period. I passed out a copy of that. And then just to provide some additional updates to that letter. So the deadline's June 8, and we just want to make sure that we get the town's kind of perspective into that process.
And Tracy, that's on the NEPA process, not on the Siting Board process?
So the NEPA process is different now since January because they've entered into a different stage? This doesn't stand anymore?
That was the initial letter that was submitted and was included into the draft. What we want to do is reiterate our stances because Vineyard Wind has provided comment to that. And as I stated, the comment was they did not want to enter into any of that until they were further along in the process or if they had a host agreement. We feel that some of this information is important to have now for decision-making purposes.
What is the relationship to this letter and our concerns in a host agreement?
They're...
Aren't they two separate processes?
They are two separate processes, and that's why it's important that we get this information separately and/or before any agreement, but that will be up to the board to make that decision as you move forward.
Should I answer your question?
Well, in the first part, in terms of the letter, I mean, I think it's obvious we need to make sure that our concerns are on the record first and foremost.
The letter on the 8th, who's that going to again?
The state.
That's going to go to the NEPA.
To NEPA?
Right.
Okay. So what I would like to see is our concerns in our letter of January 23, 2018, to Secretary Beaton, incorporated in whatever input we give by the deadline on the 8th, but not necessarily be limited to those points.
That is correct. Those will be restated, as well as a few other things will be also included as we've gone through the draft. There's a few more questions that have come up that we would like to put in there as well.
And who would be the individuals giving that input by this deadline that's coming up, at the end of the week on Friday? Yourself, Kelly, and anyone else?
We're going off the letter that there was quite a bit of input. There was public input, there was Selectmen input, there was other town staff input to that. Right now, it's going to reiterate all those concerns, as well as some additional ones staff has, have come up with.
Okay, and you said it's going to include the public response that we have kept track of?
The public concerns that were initially voiced when we put our initial letter together, I don't think any of those have really changed, at least from what I've seen within the draft that has come out, so that will be reiterated as well.
Yeah, I think, Carl, you're right in stating this letter that was drafted in January was a compilation of many comments that we received from the public, and, you know, we listened to what the input was, we had comments of our own, and I think we did, we tried to put as much of that as we could into this letter so that the concerns of the town could be addressed. So I think it's important that we reiterate that. I agree wholeheartedly, and I think asking the state to require Vineyard Wind to respond to our questions is really important to the entire process, so. Mark?
One of the things that I'm interested in is the authority of the board. In reading through the material that was prepared for us this evening, separate from the Conservation Commission, the other authority that the board has in terms of oversight or engagement is with respect to the board giving permission to utilize the roads. Is that correct?
It is. I mean, there could be other elements along the way, including your comments on the EIR, but yeah, in terms of permitting or approvals that are required, the Selectmen control municipal property, and there's a process under some of the statutes for utilities to locate within municipal property.
In reading through the material, it was, I was trying to gauge to what degree the state can overrule the town or trump the town in terms of the town being able to exercise its authority. Would you be able to comment on that?
There's two issues there, Mark, and the first relates to the approval with respect to opening up your roads, and that is more or less kind of a permit-granting authority. It's not quite couched that way under the law. That, if you denied it, that would be appealable. We are understanding...
Can I ask, Jay, excuse me, who would that be appealable to?
That's a certiori appeal for, as, it's very rare, I mean, you don't see a lot, and this is even more rare because we're talking about a different animal altogether. There's generally a deference standard under certiori appeal, provided that you have some legitimate rationale for that. My only concern, and again, we're kind of in the wild, wild west on this a little bit because we haven't seen it, is whether or not some deference we might give back to something that might be involving, they could make a case for the renewable energy elements of it. But we think it's a basic deference standard which would generally favor the Board of Selectmen, provided that we had a good rationale for rejecting it.
Okay.
So not too different than a normal electric utility that would want to locate in the road. You have to have a good reason, but it doesn't need, all 50/50 balls would be resolved in your favor.
Okay. No, that's helpful. I think in our prior experience with Cape Wind, that project, the state essentially overruled the Cape Cod Commission and other permitting-granting authorities and provided a superpermit for that. So for the folks that might be listening or might be here tonight, is the state in a position where they could essentially do that with respect to this project, do you think?
Well, I mean, I think it depends upon legislation, if they wanted to go that far, but that's only half the permitting elements here. And the other part of it is, this is basically municipal property. So in addition to the permitting, just allowing someone to use something that they don't own is a little bit more sacrosanct and doesn't require permit or a hearing or anything. It's just basically permission, and that is significant leverage in the hands of the Board of Selectmen, provided that the state through the Siting Board or DPU has some eminent domain authority that we have to keep an eye on under statute. Again, this is a, it's very rarely invoked, but this is an unusual project, and I think we have to bear that in mind, as well as, like you said, at any given point in time, special legislation or federal legislation may provide a certain level of preemption, which we see for, say, gas pipelines or any other interstate transmission of energy. So we have to be mindful of that.
No, I appreciate that. I think that's a question that I've certainly heard from many of the residents in the community that want to know essentially whether or not what happened with the other project that shall not be named, whether that likelihood could happen again. So I appreciate your answer. I support the idea of getting a letter in to the state. I mean, obviously, the first letter that we had submitted, they weren't overly enthusiastic in responding to our concerns the first time, but I think, I think we owe it to the people of this community to weigh in again and sort of outline many of the similar issues that we had expressed before. So I would certainly support authorizing the town administrator to send a similar letter expressing concerns and make sure that they're submitted in time. expressing concerns and make sure that they're submitted in time for the, the draft EIR comment period ending.
Is that a motion?
So, I, I'll make that motion right now.
Second.
Thank you, Tracy. Jay, wouldn't, we've heard some really good comments from people early in the meeting about, um, the financial trade-offs and the language in the agreement, the 400 and some odd thousand and offset against taxes and so forth. I mean, it's a really complex situation. I mean, that's a first shot from, very honestly, from Vineyard Wind. We have a substantial impact, I think, on our town in terms of the, uh, pipe going, you know, all through our roads and, and so forth. What is our opportunity for negotiation mitigation for the situation we have here in town?
I, I think there's a substantial opportunity. You know, again, it takes, it's going to take the team, this, both the staff team as well as the, the board, getting smarter about this. Again, we don't have a lot of precedent to, to work with in terms of offshore wind projects and how those mitigation agreements go. I, I, they obviously know that there's going to be mitigation in some way, shape, or form, financial or physical or other capital or recurring revenue. And I think they're prepared to negotiate. That, that is evident. Getting our hands around what those numbers may be is going to take some due diligence on our side. And on their side, they're going to have to wrap their hands and do some due diligence on what the needs of the town are to both mitigate impacts as well as understand other needs of the town that they may be to accommodate, to, given our leverage over our roads and, and other elements of the permitting process, what, what they may have to understand about us. So, it's a, it's a two-way street. I think there's some mysteries in both directions, but I think it's something that we aim to along with Dan and Chris and Carl and Kelly and, and all of you and whoever else, try and figure out to make the best deal for the town. I think there's no doubt that if we go that route, rather than waiting to see if someone may steamroll us through some kind of preemption process, then there could be substantial benefits and mitigation for the town. It's not required, of course. You could just sit back, but there is an opportunity and a window.
Everything doesn't come down to a financial deal. I mean, you know, the, uh, a lot of comments have been made about the environmental impact on Lewis Bay and so forth. And, and, you know, I think we heard those comments early on in January, and that was part of our, our letter to the state. Are there ways that, and I, I know you're not a technical expert, I don't, and I don't know if the rest of our staff is coming up to speed on this, but ways that, um, as opposed to, you know, a six to eight-foot, uh, pipeline, can they drill deeper down and go through the, in a, in a less harmful way to the environment?
I think those are things that we really need to get into a dialogue with the proponents, with, with Vineyard Wind, to see what the capabilities are. I really think that those are the avenues that we need to look at.
Pursue without.
And pursue those discussions as far as how can we, if, if in fact, uh, the landing will be New Hampshire Ave, then what is the, what can we do to minimize the impacts to Lewis Bay and the users? You know, horizontal drilling is what you're alluding to.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know if the technology will allow it to go all the way from Hyannis Harbor, all the way through the bay or not, but those are the questions that we definitely have to ask and we need to push forward with to best protect our bay and, and see the least amount of impact.
Thank you, Carl. That's a good comment. Appreciate that.
That's the problem that we're still having. We had this conversation in January, here we are. I still feel like it's the chicken or the egg without knowing the information. It's hard. I think, I don't, I don't, we can get into the, the details of, of an agreement. We, we weren't involved in the initial agreement. And in my opinion, the ball, you know, we are, have the upper hand in that agreement, and we should go for everything that we know. I agree with the speaker about the sidewalk. I think that if there's any impact to Lewis Bay, anything that we could do to mitigate that, I mean, I think we should ask for everything. Every issue that has been brought up by our residents should be asked for, and nothing short of that. Because, um, you know, we're in the driver's seat right now, and, um, whether or not they take it or not, that's, you know, that's up for negotiation, but I think we're, you know, I think we're selling ourselves way short for the potentials. I, I understand that the whole process has to happen. You know, I still go back to our initial conversation with this. This is not like either we approve the project or don't approve the project. I think the board back years ago with that other project understood the significance, unfortunately, of how these processes work. And what, what I think our responsibility is, is to the citizens of Yarmouth. And if we negotiate nothing and we have to put up with the road being opened and not getting a sidewalk or anything for it, you know, I'm not sure I'm willing to take that risk. Having said that, I'm not comfortable with making any decision that's going to degrade our environment. So, you know, what do you do? You're stuck. Has the Conservation Commission or the Waterways Committee had discussions or a position on this? That's one of my questions. And the second question is, I know that there's already transmission lines that were shown here. Is there any history or learning experience that we have from the previous transmission lines or degradation to that watershed that we need to be cognizant of in, in this, in this process?
Sure. I can speak for Waterways. We have not reviewed the project. There hasn't been an official proposal that has been placed before. We usually review projects that are going to the Conservation Commission to provide the input to the Conservation Commission. I think in general discussion, this has come up, um, in just general discussion of, you know, preparing them that, you know, this is something that's on the horizon and that will be, will be asked to take a look at. So, it's not going to be a surprise. And we can probably discuss that even further on that. Did you want to touch base with CONCOM?
Yeah, with regard to CONCOM, they haven't reviewed it to date. Again, because, you know, the process is usually that there is an application before them, but having said that, we did discuss a bit earlier in the process that, um, around the time when the draft environmental report was available, so there was more information to review, that they could perhaps like have an informal discussion so that they can come up to speed and start to understand the impacts of the project. So, so I think that, that may be something that we can look at.
And do we know of any degradation to or because of these transmission wires that are in the sound now? And that's one question. I'll get the other questions out, too, because I'm concerned about the multiple lines. One of the things that we tried to negotiate initially was making sure that other, um, other wind projects don't, um, come in tandem with this project and how we have the ability to, um, or if we have the ability to ask MIPA or anybody else to make sure that that is heard? Or is that just something specifically that we would have to negotiate? Or if it's negotiable?
I can touch base on some of the other lines that do come in. There's three that come into Falmouth from Martha's Vineyard. There's one that goes into Calumne Beach from Nantucket or two one from Nantucket. And the other one goes from Harwich to Nantucket. The most recent one is the one that comes into Calumne Beach. Granted, all of those lines come into a Nantucket Sound beach. It doesn't come up through a separate ecosystem, an abeyment such as this one will through Lewis Bay. The frontal beaches are a little bit more dynamic. The grain size is a little bit larger, so it tends to be a little bit more stable, and I'm only going on assumption, uh, right now. Speaking with some of the, some of the, uh, people in those communities, um, they haven't seen any dramatic change in, in the shorefront or the nearfront on Nantucket Sound, but it's an entirely different system dynamically. Also, all of those landfalls, I believe, I'm not sure about some of the earlier ones, but I believe they're all horizontally drilled up to the connection on shore. So, um, you know, the nearshore where eelgrass beds may be, where shellfish beds may be, so forth and so on, were avoided. They were not opened up either through the jetplow system or through an open trench.
And how was that mandated? How was that regulated? Was that regulated through?
I, I believe, look, yeah, looking at the permits for a couple of the more recent ones, it was mandated to avoid the eelgrass beds. The difference is Lewis Bay doesn't have eelgrass beds. But, you know, that's why I brought up the whole comment of, you know, maybe horizontal really may be a way, you know, in Lewis Bay if at all feasible. So, you know, those are the things that, you know, we, we do need to hash out and get a better understanding of and push forward, um, because we are talking about a different type of ecosystem being the abeyment versus the frontal beach. So, I mean, those are the things that, you know, we as staff, as well as the public have. But looking at some underground photographs and videos of, you know, post-installation, you know, roughly, I think it was roughly six months later, it was pretty, you know, settled down, you know, areas in close proximity, you could see the shell and, and the sponge and, and other things, and all of a sudden, you just see the sand, you know, where it's in line with where the, the, the jetplow was done. So, there was some scarring, but it, it didn't, you know, it, like I said, it's a more dynamic sand area, so you didn't see any, any, um, major silting in that area because of the dynamics.
But you're saying that there's further investigation that has to be determined before you could figure out if that is even the best way for the environment? So, it may not be. The shellfish beds may be affected or something else. So, I guess where in the process, when you find those things out, how are you able to make sure that that's addressed?
I think right now, you know, as, you know, as Vineyard Wind is going through the process, they need to answer these questions, not only for us, but Division Marine Fisheries, Army Corps, National Marine Fisheries, all these entities and looking at their comment letters, they have similar concerns as we do. So, they need to go out there and do some of these studies to determine that. I think one of the important things is to see what the sediment is in Lewis Bay. I know, uh, reading the Division Marine Fisheries comments, they have the same concerns we do in Lewis Bay as far as disturbance. So, those, those answers are going to be hashed out. They are going to need to produce that information to the, to, to the permitting agencies and those that have input to the, to the permitting agencies. So, we should be getting tho, that information. Should it have been done prior to this point? In, in the best case scenario, I would love to have had all that information in hand to look at prior, but it's, it's, it's what's being generated through the process.
I think the agencies, when they write their permits, have the conditions in the permits, do they not, that specify what types of, uh, construction is going to be used and, uh, what's going to be used where? So, I think they're very specific in those requirements.
Absolutely. But it's that other information, I think, that Tracy is alluding to.
Right.
You need to have in hand to, to put those conditions forward.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, I guess my other question is, is in terms of entering into some type of negotiations, I think it's been hard for staff because, you know, they're looking for direction from us. It's hard for us to give direction at this point, in my opinion. It's still difficult. Again, we're weighing what could potentially happen. Is there like a, uh, greater good type of exemption? So, like, if we didn't allow them the road openings, that they would say that there's, it's a project of public benefit? Do they have more leverage in that?
Well, that's what we, that's what I was mentioning before, Mark. I'm not aware of that standard being applicable in terms of the permit side of it for the road opening. There is no standard for use of your property. There is no hearing, there's nothing. You don't have to allow the use of your property, period. Now, if the state or the federal government, and the state has the authority through the DPU to do a taking, they have to set forth a public purpose to do a taking. They have that authority. So, that they have to establish some kind of public purpose. I, I think we can envision what they would allege here, and the bar is fairly low for that. In terms of appealing a denial of the, the permit in the, in the roadways, I haven't seen a certiori case right on point, because there are none. But I think that we could, um, we would certainly work on bill if it came to that, on building up a decision that considered a number of factors on that in terms of long-term upheaval of the roadways. I mean, I, I could envision a permitting decision on that that, that I would hope would be given deference by a superior court, because that's where it would be heard. And you never know what happens after that. I would expect that their argument, they would raise some kind of public good, but ultimately, if it's the deference standard, then I would, I would hope we would prevail there. It's not the end of the story, and there's no guarantees in that. But it's certainly a piece of leverage that we have.
Well, I think our biggest concern initially was the former project, and whereas this one is placed much better, it still affects Lewis Bay, but we're protecting, we want, we want to continue to protect Nantucket Sound. And one of the problems, as you've heard, is the fact that multiple lines can go in these vaults. And how do we manage an agreement that doesn't allow for that?
Unclear. It's an issue that we, we've talked about. I don't know if we can agree around it, have something private in terms of that, or if it's, if that's a right that, that we could bargain away, or they could bargain away, more likely. I, I think it also may have some, again, it's going to tie back into what the bay can handle in terms of the number of lines emanating at that, at that single point. That's something that we'd have to do a little bit more research on. It's certainly an issue that we're aware of. And I don't know if the state would help us out on that or not. I, I haven't, we certainly haven't seen a lot of that.
Well, I'm asking because of the letter. Is that something that, you know, we could, we could have MIPA review the regulations on that, or if it should be part of, part of that letter or concern?
I certainly think a question as to whether or not additional co-located cables or cables laid or cables drilled might be something that moves the needle past where they'd be comfortable. I think it's a legitimate area of inquiry. I, I think they might likely say, we'll, we'll examine that when we see it. But, um, because they're just an environmental agency and they're likely to review just what's before them, but I certainly think it's a question worth posing at the, the MIPA level.
And in terms of timing, I know, I know, again, staff is looking for direction, but how, how long can we wait to get answers before we make a determination? Is there, in terms of a, an agreement, is there, is there time for us to try to get, collect some more data and be able to make a decision? Or is this, I mean?
I think we could certainly, I mean, and, and I think staff is, is, we understand the blank canvas element to this, and I don't think any, I think any, I think all that staff is looking for is an opportunity to start a process that, that could have a result at the end of the day with no promises to Vineyard Wind, but I think a mere signal to Vineyard Wind that we're willing to at least have discussions on the level of mitigation, both environmentally and financially and other, with respect to other matters, would be a signal that they might be willing to answer some of our questions more directly, rather than just living through the permitting processes if we had specific questions that we said we weren't getting satisfaction on through the siting board or MIPA or otherwise, that maybe they would redouble their efforts.
So, you're saying, if I'm reading between the lines, what you're telling me is that we're getting limited information because they're withholding that?
I didn't, I wouldn't suggest that they're withholding it. I would say that.
They're just not moving forward on it as quickly as we want them to.
They, they may not be gilding the lily. And I think what we would be requesting is that they gild the lily for us.
Okay.
And say that, okay, we, MIPA may be satisfied with that, but here we are.
Well, I'm just frustrated because I feel like I don't have more answers than the last time that we had this discussion. So, okay. Other than what you've told me tonight. Thank you.
Eric, do you have any other? I could see my time to Tracy.
I could see my time to Tracy.
Yeah. (laughing).
Seems to me, you know, moving forward in some way, opening up a discussion with Vineyard Wind makes sense. But I think we, you know, we need, in fairness to the community, to require them to come forward and meet with our town residents.
They've been doing that.
In an open environment. I mean, well, I know, but nonetheless, we've done that in a lot of different instances. We required the developers, just for an example, of Cavalier. We've done it internally with regard to the drive-in site, and I think asking them to have the same kind of forum would allow our residents to speak directly to them, ask questions in our environment. I don't know what everybody else thinks about that, but...
You know, one thing I would like to see is, we have not yet heard from them why they won't go someplace else.
(inaudible).
And the reason they don't want to go someplace else is because Cape Wind will eventually go in Nantucket Sound if they get this cable. So, that's the only question I care about. If you can't go someplace else, tell us why you can't.
Well, I think we have a motion on the table right now.
For the letter.
To authorize the letter. And so, anyone take a vote on that at this point?
I'd like the question of the multiple transmission lines to be asked to MEPA at that time as well, included in that letter.
Okay. Okay, those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move forward with the letter. Yes.
I would just ask if any of the board members have any additional questions that may have, this discussion may have got stirring. Please get it to us as soon as possible so we can include that as well.
Well, while we're having this conversation, let me just make a footnote here. I would recommend both of you taking a look at the Massachusetts Ocean Plan, Management Plan. That was finished, it's been a while since I've read it, but in it, there is a discussion precisely about this issue. And the state, actually, I identified, I'm following up on Eric's point, the state actually identified a set of recommendations in terms of where transmission cable locations ought to go, and I don't believe this area was one of them.
Great point.
All right? So, if you look at that document, there are actually multiple locations. So, I would recommend looking at that, but also being conversant in the criteria for making a determination as to where an appropriate location is. I do believe the plan at one time, at least in draft form, identified ecologically sensitive areas to avoid. So, I would go to that document, I would utilize that. Eric's comment just sort of triggered that, so I would encourage you to do that.
I think the second point, back to what you were bringing up, Tracy, is a, you know, giving some direction to staff with regard to contacting Vineyard Wind in front of initiate some negotiations or discussion regarding the entire project. Is that something that's important at this point?
That is important, yeah. And, you know, and if I can just build on a point that Tracy raised, you know, if that is the direction that the board so chooses, you know, we are ready to engage with engineering consultants, valuation consultants, to make sure that we have the best possible...
Can you hear him? Could you speak up just a little bit? We can't hear him. Thank you.
We would engage with engineering consultants, valuation consultants, to make sure that we have the best team in place to help make sure that the town is really pursuing the best deal and is protecting the resources and the town. So, I just wanted to add that point because Tracy brought that up. So, any direction that we could get from the board this evening on starting a conversation with Vineyard Wind would be...
I mean, our downside risk is nonetheless that we get locked out of the process by some sort of state or federal agency, and we don't have the power to negotiate any further, and that would not be in our best interest as a town.
Correct.
Right. Is that something, do we need a motion on that, or is it... I think you have to look at this situation on more than one front. First thing is, obviously, the environmental interests have to be protected because if they're not, that may be the end of the discussion. But the concern I have in a matter like this, if you get an issue of preemption where the town's interests get subordinated to state or federal interests, federal interests in particular, then you could lose all or a portion of your negotiation capacity. So, I think that you have to be ready for anything, really, and to be in that position, I think you have to engage in discussions with Vineyard Wind at the same time so that if it ever does reach that point, and I'm not indicating that I'm predisposed to anything because I'm not, I wouldn't want to be in a situation where preemption raises its ugly head and then say, well, gee, let's try to negotiate because you'd be negotiating from weakness at that point. In that, you wouldn't be prepared. Negotiations take a lot of preparation, a lot of discussion, a lot of involvement, potentially, the hiring of consultants, because this is a new area, it's a new field. I don't think anybody, any other town can give us, probably in the state, any real guidance on how these contracts shake out in terms of what's a fair deal for a municipality. So, there'd be a lot of research involved as well. I think you be prepared for everything, and then you make the decision that you think's the best decision to make. Again, the environmental interest being first and foremost, and then if it looks like some action might be taken by a greater authority that could put the town in a very vulnerable position, you have the information that you need to respond to that in a meaningful way.
Are you allowed to charge a fee to enter into a negotiation? You're allowed to have a, I mean, I guess I'm thinking about, it's great to have engineers, but how are we going to pay for that? It's not part of our budget. Is that something that you're allowed to have, like, an application fee to enter into a negotiation? Can you have that?
I wouldn't call it an application fee. I would say, look, we need to hire an engineer to speak your language here and to review some of this stuff. Are you guys willing to deposit some money with us? We may be able to do it through the guise of like a kind of Chapter 44, 53G, like, review account. We may have to do it otherwise through a little bit of procurement, but I would ask them if they'd be willing to pay for it.
It's common in other projects, so there's no reason why I couldn't be applied here.
You don't have an application before us, but I think...
No, but oftentimes developers will provide funding for a municipality that has to review the impacts of a particular project.
We had that question about, we weren't allowed to, I remember before, this was a Cape Cod Commission thing, that we weren't authorized to charge for mitigation or even look at mitigation, so, because we didn't have the authority. But this is basically just saying...
Looking for a contribution.
Make us a donation because we're taxpayers, shouldn't have to foot the bill to make sure that we can...
And I don't think the town has any downside, really, to entering into a dialogue with Vineyard Wind because ultimately, the board's going to, no matter how much work is done, no matter how many offers and counteroffers you get, if you don't like the deal, or you don't think that the projects should go forward, that's within your control.
Back away. Yeah, so. Do we need a motion, or you think you have enough direction at this point? Would you prefer a motion?
I don't think we've heard from all the board members.
No.
It'd be good to, well...
What are you waiting to hear?
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure...
I think Eric made his position very clear.
Motion would be helpful.
Motion would be helpful? You have a motion from the board on this?
This doesn't tie us to anything, this just says we need to have a conversation.
Hundred percent non-committal.
No one else will make the motion, I will.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Further discussion?
What's the motion?
To move forward with, open up discussions with Cape Wind...
Vineyard Wind.
Yeah. Yeah. Excuse me. Vineyard Wind.
I'm going to have to amend your motion.
(inaudible) slip, I'm sure. That right there is reason enough not to vote for it.
Again, I'm not at a point yet, I don't, I would like, I don't know if we'll ever get further clarification about whether or not they're allowed to do it without an agreement, but here we are. So, I think, you know, to protect the town, we have to have the conversation.
Okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move ahead. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a statement, we're, no, Vida, no...
I wanted to just ask a question in relation to what just went on here.
Please. All our board is doing is listening. We're not making any decisions at this point, and I think it's clear that we are looking for strong representation and protection of our interests, and I think the town can be assured of that at this point.
My question, Vida, is that she wants to follow through on his own suggestion to bring in the Cape Wind people, I mean, when people...
For a hearing.
The public will have the opportunity to...
Thank you, Vida. We're going to move on to the Bray Farm hayride loop naming.
Okay, Chris, are you going to take this, the Bray Farm?
Yeah, I can give you a quick update, but I see Karen in the audience, maybe Karen would be better suited to provide the board a quick update.
All right.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Hey, what's that?
Do it!
Oh. I don't, I mean, Don McIntyre was there for a long time, he was...
Why don't we let people leave here?
Nobody's listening, nobody cares.
I do, go for it. I care, Eric.
They got their own thing going on down there, they don't even know what I'm saying.
No, they don't care, but I...
No, they don't have any idea.
Hi, Karen.
Hello.
How are you tonight?
I'm good.
Good.
How are you?
Good.
So...
Not if we steal your thunder.
Huh?
We were just going to make a motion.
Oh, go, no, I don't mind. I don't mind at all.
I make a motion that we approve the Taylor Bray Farm naming of the hayride loop after Mr. Don McIntyre Trail. We have all the information here, she's just going to read it.
Do you have a second out there?
I'll second that.
Oh, my gosh. So, moving right along, Karen.
I moved the question.
Yes, all right, Mark, go ahead.
Of course, you may.
Will we have some discussion?
Discussion, question, yes.
I don't want to talk about the motion so much as the criteria for naming. I'm all in favor of the motion, but can we just put that on the diary to be revisited because that policy is inherently, I think, contradictory and really needs some work. It's not a very well-written document, and again, I don't think it applies to this motion, but I think we, I'd like to put it on the calendar for us to revisit that.
You got it.
Okay.
All right, did it answer your question, Mark?
Yes.
I was surprised at how loose it was myself, but such as it is, my motion stands.
All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Englewood Beach, no parking areas.
I see Lieutenant Lennon here.
Who's talking with us about Englewood Beach?
Lieutenant Lennon's here, oh, and the chief I saw too.
That'll be Lieutenant Lennon and, I think, Pat Armstrong as well, somewhere here.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
Terrific.
Boy, oh, boy, look at the names on that. Just stuff on that.
Jack.
Jack Howard.
We have an esteemed group of people here.
That's because you should know.
All right, if you could identify yourselves and tell us what you're here to talk to us about.
Kevin Lennon, I'm a lieutenant with the armed police department, here to talk about the parking down by Englewood Beach.
Okay.
Pat Armstrong, director of community services.
Frank Frederickson, chief of police.
I'll start.
Good.
Back in April of 2016, one of the neighbors in the New Hampshire Avenue area contacted the town with some pedestrian safety and illegal parking concerns. At that point, town administrator Dan Knappick in early June put together a team of town department heads to go down and take a look at the area and put together a list of suggestions on how to improve that situation. One was to reinstitute the annual town meeting 1994 parking regulations and replace any of the missing signage. Second was to step up parking enforcement by both YPD and Natural Resources. Thirdly, to create three additional parking spots in front of the sailing center. Fourth was to clear the existing boat trailer parking along the southern end of Broadway in order to increase parking access. Fifth was to increase the turning radius between the boat ramp and the sailing center, and finally was to develop additional parking by purchasing available lots in the neighborhood. By June 30th of 2016, we had reinstituted the parking regulations, replaced the missing signage, stepped up enforcement, created three new parking spots, and also cleared the existing boat trailer parking along the southern end of Broadway. As we did this, we saw there were still some concerns during the time period following. We put in an application to the Community Preservation Committee and asked to purchase the property at 179 Berry Avenue, which is the former Louis Bay Yacht Club, to augment parking. That application to CPA was finally not approved by the CPA because a clear understanding of how we were going to use that facility was not made available to them. Parking is not one of the options of buying property with the Community Preservation Committee, and it wouldn't be an enhanced recreational use, so we did not bring that forward to town meeting. Secondly, we felt that the neighbors, after our first summer of these changes, needed to have some input, so Assistant Town Administrator Dwelly had a community meeting in September of 2016, which was attended by over 50 neighbors, and a list of 14 recommendations were presented to the town, and we worked diligently with the neighbors over the next 12 months to address their concerns. We had five public meetings held through the wintertime, and of those meetings came to you what will be presented tonight by Lieutenant Lennon as public safety concerns and an update of the needs based on the development of the area.
Kevin. So, from the police department's aspect, we wanted to see, take a look at the area and see what we could change to make it safer. So, if you look at the original document from 1994, there was, parking with trailers was allowed on Shore Road westerly from New Hampshire. That's problematic for many reasons. Number one, it doesn't say north or south side of the road, so you could potentially have a truck and a trailer on both sides of the road, which would prevent any type of access from regular vehicles or emergency vehicles. The road is narrow in and of itself, and there's marshland just a couple hundred feet down on the north and south side. So, when I put the parking plan together, we looked at removing those signs, again with the public input, because it is dangerous if there's a trailer there and you're coming east on Shore Road, you would have to go around the trailer to make a left-hand turn, and that, again, was just problematic. So, we took a look at the entire area, and we came up with the proposed changes that Mr. Knappick had sent out to the group, which would be on Shore Road, remove all trailer parking on Shore Road, and we are now going to add 400 feet westerly on Shore Road, there will be no parking of any vehicles. The reason for that, again, is because the road is very narrow, and once you get down just a couple hundred feet, you run into the marsh. So, the parking on Shore Road will start after number 33, and then it would be allowable on the north and south sides. On Vermont and Massachusetts Ave, from shore to the waterway, there was also trailer parking allowed there. Again, listening to the public's concern about people moving through that area and sitting there, it became apparent to us that it's problematic if anybody's trying to back a trailer up there, there's too many hazards. So, that is now going to be designated as vehicle parking only, no trailers. So, really what we're doing is just removing the trailer parking from those main areas and then making it no parking for any vehicles on Shore Road westerly from New Hampshire, approximately down 400 feet. It's going to be in the bout of area number 33, just past that driveway, and that will open up that whole area. up that whole area.
So, what are you looking for us to do?
Mr. Knappick sent amendments to the 1994 parking regulation that would be adopted by the board tonight.
Okay. Where are the amendments?
They're right there.
Okay, at the bottom, okay, all right.
So the second page where it says.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the second page where it says the new regulations should read as follows, "Vehicles with boat trailers only, all others shall be towed." Broadway, south side of, west of Berry Avenue, 500 feet, that's existing. Berry Avenue, west side, south of New Hampshire Avenue, that's existing. New Hampshire Avenue, west side, south from the intersection of Shore Road to the water, that is existing. And then no parking tow zone for vehicles with or without trailers on Shore Road, 400 feet westerly from New Hampshire Avenue. And that will pretty much cover what we're looking for in that area.
Questions from the board?
Nope, no questions.
I have questions. Where will the trailers park? Where do you foresee, how many trailer spaces do we have now, and is it enough for a boat launch area?
There will be 11 boat trailer parking spaces available. At the moment, there are eight.
There are eight with the allowance of them parking on the road? And we're taking that off, and how are we adding?
We went down and counted, there are some spaces on Broadway, but there's three on Broadway, there's two at the end of New Hampshire Ave, there's one at the end, one at the end of New Hampshire Ave, there's three at the end of Berry Ave, there's parking in the parking lot on the far side for two trailers, and there's off of Columbus at the end of Broadway.
They don't, they don't pay a fee to launch, correct?
That's correct.
And they don't have to have a special sticker?
No stickers are required.
Is that something that we could require to help mitigate the parking issue at this particular place?
If it would be the board's desire for us to look at parking and stickering of parking lots that presently aren't stickered, we would certainly be able to do that, but at this point, we haven't been encouraged to be doing that.
No, and I don't wanna encourage it, but we have a kind of a traffic nightmare down there, there are other places with adequate parking, like we did the upgrade at Smugglers Beach where, you know, we could, hopefully if we did that, we would incentivize people to go to a different place. I mean, parking's crazy, I support these, but I just think, thinking beyond that, I'm not sure 11 is enough.
I can't say I don't agree.
I know. So that parcel that we tried to purchase.
Yes.
There's a house on it?
179 Berry Ave has a structure on it, it is not considered a house, it's not habitable, it has restrictions on it.
Is there a way that we could work a, well, we can't afford now to lease it, but if, maybe if we had sticker fee down there, we could maybe lease some property?
We made an offer, three offers, to the owners, but since that time, they have sold it to a private interest.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mark?
I'm fine, thank you.
Mike?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
You know, my only, I didn't have any questions, but I heard somebody in the audience say that there are 30 trailers a day down there, and I've never been down there, but I believe that there are probably at least 30. So, I mean, we have to be committed to towing the illegal parkers, or else they're not gonna break the habit, so what's the enforcement plan?
As we did last summer, the sergeants have already been instructed to start stepping up patrols in that area, and they will start enforcing it as needed. We will hope that some education comes in play first, and then if towing becomes a necessity, it will be done. We will get signage, the proper signage up as quickly as possible. The signs, we found out today, were taken down, but we know where they are, so we will get proper signage up as quickly as possible, and then we will just do our best to enforce it. Then we'll, as I said, we'll do our best to enforce it. The ships have already been, been asked to step up the presence in, in all the areas that we ran into problems with last year, as, as we start getting busier. Parking is a, is a definite problem that we have in the town in some, some beach areas, and we're gonna do the best of our ability to make sure that we don't run into problems before the season hits.
And Natural Resources have been asked to do the same, sir.
Just as a, I mean, I hate to see our police force being drawn to, to deal with situations like this. I mean, is there, are there any other kinds of resources that we could use that would be, you know, more appropriate to that kind of situation?
Barnstable has parking ticket people.
Well, I, you know, I don't know.
I think we're getting to a point in time when we might wanna look at parking as an issue, and I believe it's on the agenda for Mr. Knappick to review, and possibly with the board. Chief, did you have something to say?
I think with this situation, I think using the police is the best use of personnel to get it done, particularly this year where it's so new. I think our presence will be more effective than having other people do it right now. We do wanna look at all the parking, because there are, the beaches have become much more popular than in the past, so we gotta figure some things out.
All right.
So, education, you're not gonna educate anybody unless you're around there all day, because they're gonna go out at sunrise, and then they're not gonna come back until later in the day unless you just happen to catch them at, they're in the 15 minutes that they're launching, or the 15 minutes that they're hauling out, you're never gonna see them. So what power does a home, a property owner have to call Silver Club and say, "There's a, a vehicle with a trailer parked in my front yard, which is not an authorized parking zone, come take it away?"
We would, we would have to be notified, the police would, from a public.
Who notifies you?
Anybody could notify us.
Silver Club, would they notify that you?
No, they, we would have to be there to identify it as a, either a violation or a traffic hazard to tow the vehicle.
So the homeowner would have to.
If they're on private property, that's a different story.
Well, the definition of private property is a slippery slope, because you can easily park a boat and a trailer within the road layout, it's technically not private property, but everybody thinks that the grassy area in front of their house is their property. Whatever.
You know, I think, I do think education, we, we had this issue at Dennis Pond, and you guys stepped up enforcement there, and, you know, you start talking to people, people understand, they see the signs. It takes a little bit of time, but unfortunately, it's been a long time, it's really gonna be changing habit. This has been, it's been a mess down there for a while. Yeah, so it's gonna take time, but I think this is a good place to start.
Okay, did we have a motion?
Yes, I made a motion to adopt the regulations and amendments.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're gonna move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tough, tough situation. No, thank you. Next item on the agenda. Metropolitan Planning Organization, since the sun here, because I asked Dan to put it on, in, in the meantime, I contacted the town of Dennis, Liz Sullivan, and she's approaching the Board of Selectmen there to see if they have an interest in proposing an alternative rep, so that'll come up at a future meeting. So the next item on the agenda is the Barnstable Water Intermunicipal Agreement. Is that Chris? Who is, or is?
I see Jeff here, so perhaps Jeff can speak to the agreement. And the tree ward and one as well.
Yes, good evening, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. And the Barnstable Water Agreement, just a couple of quick items for you, this is something you've seen before, this has been in place for a couple of years, actually, an agreement's been in place since 2015. Just in kind of a broad overview, Barnstable has contamination issues in some of their wells associated with PFOS, PFOA, and actually 1-4 dioxin, which is very difficult to remove, but they are moving towards a filtration system for their wells, and when that's available, they, they claim that they won't need to blend our water with theirs anymore, so we hope that's certainly the circumstance. As I mentioned, they're very difficult contaminants to remove, so I have a feeling that they'll need at least some amount of water in the future, but that can be determined at a, a later date. So what they're proposing for a contract is through December of 2020, I believe, and that is to take them through that point, where they'll then have a filtration system for their wells online, and hopefully be much less dependent on water from Yarmouth. The agreement you have before you in your packet, very similar to previous agreements, the only difference is there's some of the administrative items have changed, we've had a retirement in the water superintendents, there's a new point of contact for, for Yarmouth, that, that type of thing, but the, the language, the conditions, the same as previous agreements. And there was also, I think, concern from the board previously last year when we were looking for a renewal of the contract about broadening the conversation as it related to water issues between the two communities. And I can tell you that we've been having some very broad discussions with Barnstable about water issues generally, so we're looking at solutions not just to drinking water, which we can help them with, but some wastewater issues they can help us with. So we're talking with Barnstable on a Lewis Bay watershed approach, and so that has certainly been very productive. We're at the very early stages of those discussions, but through the grant that we were able to secure through a regional cooperation type of grant, we have $50,000 to pursue those discussions with Barnstable, and we've been heading in that direction. We've had initial kickoff meeting, which was very productive, and they're very receptive to those discussions with us. Just to also highlight what this value of this agreement is to Yarmouth financially, last year, within the last 12 months, Barnstable has paid us $455,000 under this agreement, so that's the revenue that's come in as it relates to this. And another question that might come up relative to the rate we're charging, we're charging $3.53 per thousand gallons, that covers our operating costs as well as a payment towards capital improvements for the Yarmouth system, so that's the reasoning behind that $3.53 per thousand. That's also consistent with generally what Hyannis water users pay, and so there's really an incentive for Hyannis to get that filtration system online as soon as possible, because there, it's really a pass-through from what we're charging them versus what, you know, they could be making as far as revenue if they were generating their own water through their own filtration plant, and it would be at a lower cost, they would then be able to reinvest in their system. And so there is a built-in incentive for them to, to get off of that dependence on Yarmouth water as quickly as possible, and they're moving in that direction. So that's just a general overview relative to disagreement. As I mentioned before, it's been in place since 2015, and, and this is a continuation of that.
Okay, questions for the board? Eric?
My only question is, this doesn't do anything to address the disparity in the water rates for those people that live in Comocuit Heights, and I think that this would be a great tool to address that, but when I asked Dan, the answer I got was, well, you know, we don't wanna upset the apple cart because we're gonna try to negotiate with them for wastewater, which to me isn't an acceptable answer, so, you know, I, I think this tool could be used to solve the Comocuit Heights problem, so I am not going to authorize its signing until it does something to address that.
Sure, I've heard that before, and if I could, Chris. Just to clarify, Barnstable is complicated in that they have five water districts, this agreement is with the Hyannis Water District, it is not with the Barnstable Water District, which is generally the district in the Barnstable Village area, the Route 6A area, so that would be a completely different agreement, a different entity that we would have to negotiate with to impact any change with regards to Comocuit Heights.
You know, the fact that Barnstable being complicated is not our problem. I mean, I don't care what they have to do, fix it. You know, if you have to take money from one place and, and switch it to another place within the town of Barnstable, I don't care. Do what you have to do, but you can fix it. If you, if the will is there, and they really want to fix it, it can be fixed. It's not that hard. So.
This is a completely independent elected authority.
I don't care.
It's almost like dealing with the schools in a sense, it's a completely independent.
I appreciate that, but I don't care.
I'm surprised, though, based on that, that our agreement isn't with the Barnstable Water District, it is with the town of Barnstable, so the payment goes from the Water District to the town to us?
That's because Hyannis Water District is unique in that it falls under the structure of the town. The other four districts, water districts within Barnstable fall under, within a separately elected fire district. Hyannis Water is different, it falls under the town structure.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I'm.
Do we, do we know the cost of those 40 households, the cost of that disparity?
Yeah, I put some documentation together several months ago, and my calculations is the cost, if the town were to absorb that, would be in the $20,000 range. I've seen some calculations from residents in that area that indicate it might be closer to 10, so it's in the $10,000 to $20,000 range relative to the difference between the Barnstable water rates and the Yarmouth water rates for those 40 homeowners.
And this $3.53 per gallon, has that escalated at all over the course of our contract years?
It has not.
Why, why is that, our costs haven't increased?
Well, since 2015, our water rates haven't changed, the Barnstable rates have not significantly changed in that period either. The very first agreement was based upon a formula, and this agreement and the last were based upon that fixed rate as far as calculation of.
So if we raised it a penny to make up for our $20,000 that they could then send to, to Barnstable Fire District to, to offset the water rates of those 40 people, would that be something that could happen?
To have the town of Barnstable pay the fire district?
If we raised it a penny, we could reimburse the residents without having to take anything out of our pocket.
I mean, we're getting 455 if we're not, I mean, I just don't know how it is, I just, I, I, I agree with Eric in, in terms of, this is the time, I think, it's Barnstable, and I know there's a long history there of the people that understand what they signed on for. Unfortunately, at the time, I don't think the board protected the people of, of Comocuit because there were equal rates at the time, and now they are paying for the better, the people of Barnstable benefiting on the backs of our residents, is the way I feel about it now. So I'm not sure how you can work that in, but if, if it can be worked in, I think now is the time to, to try to.
So I mean, you could work that in with the existing agreement at, at $3.53, I mean, as Jeff alluded to, you know, this is overall a, a good agreement for the town, and it's beneficial, and we're essentially making money here, so if the board made a decision that they wanna take care of that neighborhood, they could certainly do that with the existing agreement as it stands, or, or without the.
You know, we're making money, but they're selling the water for more than we're, we're selling it to them, so they're making, they're probably making money on the water that we're giving them.
Another clarification too, because these are separate fire districts, they're separate infrastructure, so this water that we're pumping over to Hyannis Water is in no way connected to Barnstable Fire District infrastructure, so it is different water. Comocuit Heights is paying through Barnstable Fire District, Barnstable Fire District is pumping the water out, treating the water, putting it through their distribution system, and delivering it to the customers, maintaining those pipes, that's completely separate from Hyannis Water infrastructure and.
Understood. The biggest problem is, as much as we wanna do that and try to help them out, the thing is, is this agreement could end at, you know, in a year, and then what? You know, then, then, then how do we make up for the, you know, the difference? So.
Then, you know, this is good through, we can work on an alternative solution, but let's use this as, you know, instead, instead of finding reasons why we can't do it, why don't we try to find a reason how to do it? And, you know, by charging a penny per gallon increase to, to compensate our residents for the disparity, might be a good. might be a good temporary fix while we find a way to deal with Barnstable and all their water complexities that I don't care about.
Jeff, let's see. How much would it cost us to connect Comocoot Heights to our town's system?
Comocoot Heights is complicated in that there are at least half a dozen roads that those 40 residents live on. Very few, if any, of them are connected within Yarmouth. So, those roads are fingers, if you will, and I think there's, you know, five or so fingers that all connect through Barnstable. So, in order to do that, we would need to connect into those fingers from Yarmouth. The rail corridor goes up that and separates the Yarmouth infrastructure with the Barnstable infrastructure. And so, we would have to directionally drill or bore underneath those in five separate locations. There's actually one section which is sisters circled towards the south. It's very close to the highway where we'd have to go literally around a other properties, commercial properties. We could look at connecting those fingers, if you will, through easements in Barnstable. It's very complicated and a real rough ballpark because to answer your question, what would it cost? We'd probably be looking in the half a million to a million dollar range to facilitate all those connections, potential easements, and to make that happen. It's a rather costly infrastructure improvement.
How much would it cost, how much would it cost to drill a well and install pumps to supply that neighborhood?
Well, we don't own any property over there, so that would be one challenge in inquiring property to do so. There's also DEP requirements relative to Zone 1 and Zone 2 contribution areas to wells. You can't have any development within 100 feet and very limited development within 400 feet. So, whether anything could be sited over in that fairly heavily developed area is a real question. I'm not sure that, we'd have to study that, but I'm not sure there's any reasonable locations to put a well, a public supply well in that area.
What would 40 private wells cost?
40 private wells.
You're not prohibited from installing or drilling your own well?
Correct.
What would, well?
When you, private wells have distances from septic systems, and they really need to be planned out prior to the, I mean, it would be impossible.
I'm just looking at what would be the alternative?
The alternative could be, too, that the Town of Barnstable bills the Town of Yarmouth for those 40, and then we, in turn, bill the homeowner, our rate.
And that was a previous agreement's way that that was enacted 10 years plus ago?
Yeah. I guess, you know, the one thing that struck me about the information, they don't get our water bills. We put a lot of information sometimes in our water bills. So, I think that that was one of the things that really struck me is it wasn't, you know, they are residents. I don't know. I'm just throwing out different ideas, not related to this.
We're looking for a way to help these people and at the same time, not only short range, but long range. I don't know if it's within this agreement or not.
Well, perhaps we could charge the extra penny and put it into a fund that would help the town mitigate the difference between what Barnstable bills us and what we bill out. Maybe it's just that simple.
And that could be only for the life of this agreement, and we could be working on another solution that would be implemented once the Barnstable no longer needs our water.
Well...
I'd suggest we charge more than a penny difference, accumulate a more substantial fund because I think that it's going to take some study to figure out a solution and so forth.
Yeah. I mean, we could make it five cents. That way, we could pay lawyers to draft new agreements and...
You never know.
Mike, you work for a nickel, right?
Nickel a gallon?
A nickel a gallon?
I'd do it.
Thank you. Personal comment, Mike. Say what you want to say.
So, we have on the agenda for next week or two weeks, Jeff will be back before you to give an update on where we are with the water operational study just as an entity. And there are perhaps, in that conversation and next steps, some funding mechanisms to address this issue separate from this agreement that the board could potentially consider tonight or in the future if you wanted to leave this agreement as is. When's the date on renewal on this?
Well, that's interesting. That was June 1st, so we're operating right now without an agreement.
So, they need, so they need the water. I don't think they're going to be in any rush to...
They just put out publicly that they're asking for water reduction in their community already as well, so...
We could help them with that.
Turn the bell.
So, five cents is nothing.
I agree with Eric. I think that if there's any time to try to do something for the people in Comocoot Heights, it's now. And I think that even though we don't seem to have a long-term solution to the problem, we can try to do something in the next couple of years and then give us time to try to address something on a permanent basis. But even if we fail, we've given those people some relief and shown them that we have a commitment to them, which I think is important. So, what I would recommend is we defer action on this, and we instruct staff to try to address this issue with the Town of Barnstable either by way of, probably the easiest way would be to increase the rate.
I think the problem is we have no agreement at this time.
What? Who needs the water? Who's got the water?
So, what do we bill them in the meantime? Can we bill them in the meantime?
Sure.
Yeah, we have been, or we will be. If there was no agreement, we'll just continue.
Just like a lease. Your lease expires, and people stay on, and they don't have an agreement for any particular duration, but the service and the remuneration continues until you either terminate it or enter a new agreement.
Well, I'd be comfortable moving that we approve this agreement at $3.58 per gallon.
What is it now? $3.53?
Yeah, that's what you said. See if we, you may have to come back to us, but start there. And in that time, see if we can maybe collectively get the...
We'll see they've already signed.
Interestingly enough, Mark Els has already signed the document that Mike has in his hand.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good rationale explanation. Sorry, we can't, we can't sign it.
Our residents are paying for your sewer, and they're not getting sewer.
The other thing is, I don't recall us extending prior agreements for this length of time. I thought they were more like annual agreements.
We had been doing them annually.
They have been once a year.
So, they want to lock us in for a 24-month term. That's got to be worth something.
Yeah, inflation.
A dime.
There you go, another nickel. Seems to be a theme. Everything increases a nickel at a time.
What, are we at a motion for a nickel? I don't know. Jeff, what's the best way to go here? You know, I think you're getting a sense of the...
My recommendation is to use a different tool to negotiate your change that you want with Comocoot Heights, given that it's a fire district. I mean, we'll certainly try to work through Mark Els to influence the Barnstable Fire District, but I'm not sure how successful that would be.
I think once they have that, you don't have a negotiating tool.
Did you make a motion to increase the rate a nickel?
I did.
Did anybody second it? I'll second it.
I think you're selling yourself short, but...
Well, it's most of a rescinded motion, and you want to oppose a different amount.
How much revenue do you anticipate if there's a nickel raise? What's the math come to?
I'm not sure I can do that math in my head.
Well, you had, $3.43 is getting $400,000, so it's 100,000 gallons.
Per, it's a thousand.
It's $3.53 per thousand gallons, and you'd have to do the math. I can't do that in my head right, right here. A wise man, Bill Henchy, told me once, don't do math in my head.
Let's round it to $4 per thousand gallons, and we're making 400,000. That's a, what, 10 million gallons?
Is it 10 million?
It's millions of gallons.
Something like that.
Okay, 10 million is probably right.
So, what's a nickel times 10 million?
That's enough.
500,000? I don't know. Someone's got that.
No.
No, we're only making 400,000 on three.
200, 200, isn't it?
Oh, boy. Let me get my calculator.
Perhaps the board could provide us with some flexibility, especially if the issue resolves or is related to Comocoot Heights. Perhaps there'd be more willingness on Barnstable's behalf if you so choose to use this vehicle as that agreement if it were to cover the costs of Comocoot Heights and nothing in excess of that.
Just to make up the difference themselves.
Just to give us the opportunity, if you want to use this vehicle, to have the conversation about that location.
Well, they could pay the fire district the difference, Town of Barnstable.
Yeah, but I would do it, I would do it by, because of all the complexities that Jeff pointed out with the different water districts, I would do it by means of a rate increase.
Yeah. I mean, Mark Els is a reasonable guy. All you have to say is say, listen, we have to work this out. So, in the meantime, for the existence of this contract, we're just going to bump it whatever so that we can compensate our residents for the disparity. I mean, that's not unreasonable.
Or they can do it as part of the agreement.
Why don't we give, you know, rather than locking Chris and Dan into something, I give them the ability to negotiate, you know, and see who we go.
I would authorize the ability to negotiate as long as it is not this rate.
So, it's not $3.43.
Right. As long as it is three, what's the current rate?
$3.53.
You know, on the floor for a nickel, so, and that's the second.
If you guys want to go in a different direction, allow that. That's fine. I think we're all trying to get to the same end. I don't care how we get there. We just, we should try to get there. And I think once this is signed, if you're going to try to do it in another way, it's not going to happen. So, somehow we have to utilize this to try to...
What you're saying is, if we authorize a nickel, and then you can go back and talk with them and see what, you know, they propose as an alternative.
Or provide us with the direction that you'd like to see some agreement made through this arrangement to address Comocoot Heights, and then let us have that conversation, and we can come back to the board.
Okay, let me amend my motion.
Yeah, I...
Go ahead, Mark.
I was just saying, we should give our team the maximum flexibility to negotiate a fair arrangement. I would defer this until our next board meeting and allow them to come back and report what they've worked on.
It's got to come back to us anyway, whatever the...
So, I don't have a problem with that.
That's fine. I want a resolution, so however we get there is fine.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Second.
He removed, I rescinded the motion.
You did, okay.
I rescinded my second, and then I seconded Mark's new motion.
What's your motion again, Mark?
I'm moving that we instruct or authorize the town administrator to come back, bring this back to us at our next meeting with a resolution to the problem of Comocoot Heights.
So that they can negotiate a rate increase that will cover the increased costs to the residents of Comocoot Heights?
Exactly.
I don't even think we need to say that because I think that there's other ways other than the rate increase. I think even if they have an inter-agreement on how that they can make up the difference separate from this, I'm comfortable with. As long as they make up the difference between what they're charging and what we're charging.
We don't give them too many options, though, because it gets more and more complicated, especially with the configuration of the different districts in there. I would think the best way to do it would be by a rate increase.
Well, I don't see any problem with that being part of their recommendations. I just, I don't want to cut the legs out from under them. They're having good discussions. They're good negotiations. This is an issue that's come up. I would want to give Jeff and Dan and our team just the maximum flexibility to work this out and report back what their recommendations are at the next meeting before we act on this.
Okay, move forward. Let's move forward. All right, we have a motion on the table, on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose. Okay, good. Move forward. Thank you, Jeff.
He has one more, I think.
Oh, yeah. The tree warden agreement?
Yes, the tree warden agreement.
A nickel.
Yeah, Jeff, before you go, I've got something for you right here.
Okay.
That's why I couldn't find the word. I was looking at the tree warden.
Yeah, so the tree warden agreement, the Town of Yarmouth doesn't have any certified arborists. We have people that have had on-the-job training relative to tree experience, but the requirement is that you have training experience and that you're licensed to serve as a tree warden. I would expect that under this agreement that Yarmouth would have deputy tree wardens, which don't have those same requirements associated with the tree warden. They would probably likely be in highway and parks in their areas of responsibility, and the bulk of the work would be done by Town of Yarmouth deputy tree wardens. What the issue is, is that questionable trees, trees that are clearly not dead but are struggling, you know, what's the appropriate course of action with regards to those? Are they a complete removal? Depending on the type of pest, maybe it's a spray, maybe it's a more targeted trimming. And that's the call that a licensed, experienced, educated tree professional would be able to make. This would be similar in some ways to the weights and measures arrangement we have with Barnstable. We don't have personnel that do that. They do, you know, we pay them on an as-needed basis to certify scales, that type of thing. So, it'd be a similar arrangement. What the cost looks like in this agreement is that we would pay the overtime cost. This would be after the regular scheduled hours of a certified arborist from Barnstable. So, we'd pay them their overtime cost plus a $10 per hour vehicle usage fee plus a 10% administration fee. So, the cost looks at something just over $50 an hour for their certified arborist duties in working for the Town of Yarmouth. That is much more cost-effective than using one of the big tree companies that are out there. They have, you know, similar certified arborists, and we've used them for some very detailed studies and analysis. We're road, we had them look at some of our scenic roads and do a very detailed tree analysis along those areas, and we paid much more significantly than the $50 an hour or in that neighborhood for that effort. So, this would be a cost-effective way to get that professional consultation service. It's also working closely with the Town of Barnstable in partnership arrangement to effectuate that when we don't have the staff that can do that or have that expertise. This agreement would be for three years. Typically, that's what tree warden terms are. And this board would still need to appoint the tree warden once we enter this agreement. If this is authorized by this board, those names would have to come back. They have multiple certified arborists over in Barnstable that could fill that role of tree warden. So, that's the general overview of this agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board?
Yep.
Do they have a motion?
Nope. Okay, so I understand, why would we pay the four hours of overtime? What happened, so potentially, the Town of Barnstable would be benefiting. I mean, maybe we should hire our tree warden and sub him out because, I mean, if we're paying 50 and he's on straight time, why would we automatically pay overtime before we even know if it's an overtime situation?
Well, overtime is the time in which they've allowed us to use this employee. They have a 40-hour-a-week responsibilities. Barnstable felt they couldn't sacrifice any of that time. They needed them to be productive in that regular workday, so this would be outside of their regular workday. So, it would likely be after 3:30, or it would be on a weekend. We have no problem meeting with them within those time constraints. So, to compensate the employee, it would be on an overtime basis for that employee.
The employee agreed to work overtime to fulfill this need for us.
Who takes the liability of the decisions and the recommendations of their employee?
Well, this is a Barnstable employee. It would be covered under the general professional staff, you know, liability that we have. The liability associated with doing the work, the Town of Yarmouth employees will do that. So, literally, it's a call relative to whether a tree should come down or not. They're not actually taking the tree down. They wouldn't actually be doing any spraying if there needed to be a treatment to a tree. They would just be making those recommendations. So, the liability generally is very limited. We would be contracting the recommended course of action out with another company if it was a tree that we couldn't take down ourselves, or if it was a treatment spraying or trimming that required a bucket truck, something like that, which we don't have. We would contract the removal piece out. So, the liability associated with just the judgment call, whether to take a tree down or not, is somewhat limited.
And what's the hourly charge for an arborist in the private sector? I have a hard time believing that a time-and-a-half employee in a municipal would be less than the private sector.
The certified arborist, about $90 an hour.
And this works out to what, 50?
Just above $50 an hour, $52, $53 an hour.
So, this isn't like weights and measures. Weights and measures, that's their, it's within their regular scheduled time. We don't pay them on overtime. We have an agreement to pay a... We don't pay them on overtime. We have an agreement to pay a portion of their salary, is that correct?
There's like a fixed cost associated, they come in and certify the disposal area scale. There's a kind of a fixed cost associated with that. It's, it's more than $50 an hour for sure, if you were to figure out the amount of time they spend there doing that work.
And this is three years. Is there any other communities that are utilizing Barnstable's tree warden or is it just, it's just going to be us?
It would just be us.
Okay.
Okay, other question?
I, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I think it's, the idea of hiring on our own, I mean, obviously it's a much greater cost with that, so I think contracting out like this, I think at the end of the day, what are we going to be spending, $2,000, $3,000? I think it's, we're safe, it's, in the long run, it makes a lot of sense, so I'm totally in support of this.
Is that a motion?
I move to approve the agreement.
Has town council reviewed this?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Okay. We had scheduled preliminary goals discussion. But since Dan is not here, I'm not sure that it would be beneficial for us. Ahead with that at this point, I think we received a fairly significant package of materials. And I think it'd be good to have him here to discuss those with him.
I agree.
Chris is.
Sure, if I may, let me just give you a kind of a quick highlight of what's included here, which may help you as you develop your, or begin to develop your goals. So the first packet is just a copy of the existing goals. We've also provided you with a progress report on those existing goals. So this gives you a status update essentially of, of where we've come and where we're at with a lot of the goals and actions that the board identified last year, so that'll be helpful to you. The second piece is, we went through an exercise with town staff where we wanted to identify, it's an extension of the progress report, some of the, the major projects and work that's ahead of them for this year. And so we've broken that down in the, following the, the outline, the framework that you used for your goals. So you'll essentially see the goals that were agreed on last year and underneath those work plans of what staff. So that should be a helpful resource. And the last piece is a presentation. We've heard feedback from the board over the year. We've heard feedback from, from staff and the public. And we've identified a no-cost solution which will help increase internal collaboration as well as on-demand regular updates to the board and other committees and the public on, on our progress toward those goals.
Did, did we happen to receive the goals from the Chamber of Commerce as I requested last time? I didn't see it in the information.
I wasn't aware of that request, but we'll get those in some.
That would be great. I'd just like to see them to make, see if there's anything that we can partner on or help them with.
Absolutely, and Dan and I met with, with Mary at the chamber this week to essentially continue that conversation on collaboration on mutual goals.
Great.
All right, in the meantime, I didn't receive anything from board members.
That's how it works, Norm.
That's how it works. But, you know, included in the package is a statement of 2019 goals and mission. It's in the tail end here. And it seems like that's probably a starting point that we all can review. And if we don't have further discussion and comments, I think, you know, certainly we need to have a, a review of this package, I think, at our next meeting. Okay?
I would agree.
I would agree.
I think one of the suggestions that I'm going to present to you and for the others on the board to consider is linking the, the goals and objectives setting to the town administrator's evaluation. That we should sort of coincide our goals and objectives with some of the action items so that they kind of sync up. So that when we're evaluating the town administrator, we actually have something to evaluate. So rather than doing the evaluation in January in the dead of winter, maybe that's a process that can happen in May or June after this process is completed. Something to think about.
One of the reasons we do it that way is so that the board member, in terms of an election, who works with the town administrator for the year, has the ability to. So if you do it in June, you may have a new board member and you don't necessarily want somebody who hasn't worked with the town administrator rating.
No, I understand, but I think the flaw in our process is that we don't make that linkage. Maybe what's needed is maybe a half-year progress report at the time we do the evaluation. But it's, I'll, I'll present some suggestions as, as, that I think might be helpful and certainly warrant further discussion.
That is a valid point. I'm trying to link those together. And I think it's, it would be helpful to the board and, and to our town administrator.
Thank you.
Mark, I skipped over, apparently you have a, oh, no, that's not a. That was for.
No, I don't have any appointments or anything under that agenda tonight.
Okay.
I don't see any.
I don't see any minutes in the package. Upcoming agenda review. We have no meeting next week and then meeting on the 19th. We have an executive session planned on the 19th?
Yeah, so the executive session will cover collective bargaining and, as well as the Parker's River land takings, which is one of the last items on the agenda.
All right, I think, you know, we talked a little bit earlier, you know, about Vineyard Wind and about a public meeting with Vineyard Wind. And I think that we need to look at the calendar and until we meet with them, I don't think we're going to have a real good sense of when we might be able to do that or when they might be able to do that. But, but I think that we need to provide that in the calendar and ask them to, you know, come forward.
Yeah, and we'll put a place order here.
Okay.
And Mike, one of that other, the policy added at some point in time, the review? Of the.
The naming.
Yeah.
I have that, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other items we should be adding?
Not, not one immediately, Norm, but again, I would, I think at some point I would like to see some work done on a bylaw that maybe we could meet with the building department about these properties that fall into really bad states of disrepair and are nuisances to the neighborhood.
Problem property.
Is that in there already?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see it. It's August 7th? Is that it? Okay, I didn't see that, thank you.
One thing I'll throw in and I suspect Dan will probably add it in the near future, but when he's ready to is, I've spoken to Dan about moving, removing the Department of Natural Resources from the supervision of the community services. And I've spoken to Carl and to Pat and I think that all, even including Dan, thinks that it's, it's not a great fit. In my meeting with Dan, it was kind of put there because it needed a place to go. But I think, you know, we're going to see a move for it to come out from under Pat's supervision and go under Dan's supervision, similar to police and fire. So like I said, I don't know that Dan is, or when Dan will be ready to make that case in that presentation. But maybe, Norm, you could keep it on your radar to bring up with them during one of your meetings.
Okay. Okay, anything else at this point? All right. Consent agenda, town administrator items?
Yep, I have three things on here. One's an approval for the Palpalooza Special Entertainment License event. The second is just essentially an appointment update to the Affordable Housing Trust. And then the third and final is a, is a donation for a kayak rack for Dennis Pond.
Motion on the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye, please. Opposed? Okay, anything else, Chris?
No, I think the only other thing I'd add is, oh, I have an event here, the Taylor Bray Farms Sheep Festival is on the 17th. So that is on the calendar. You can get the BYU High School graduation Saturday. And then follow-up on the regional school agreement, per the board's direction, we submitted the revised agreement to the school committee as well as to the Town of Dennis. We've made mention that they would add that to a future agenda item, but we have not heard a confirmed date at this point.
I didn't know, I skipped over individual items. I didn't know, Eric, did you have any of the?
I just wanted to congratulate you on not making it through one meeting without having to use the gavel.
You did, I did though.
Well, congratulations. It was a good, hearty one, too. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, the only thing I'd like to say is congratulations to all of our graduates and to their families. And I know Saturday will be a special and sometimes bittersweet moment for them. And we always pray this time of year that they all make it safely and behave. So congratulations to all of them.
Mark?
I'm all set, thanks.
Mike?
Two quick things, on the follow-up on what Chris said. The annual sheep festival at Taylor Bray Farm is June 17th, 9 to 4, rain or shine. No dogs allowed at that event. They're going to have silent auctions, sheep herding, sheep shearing, all kinds of good stuff. That, that is a volunteer organization that supports the farm. They pay for the feed for the animals. They do not charge the town anything for the care of the farm or for the, or for the animals. And they depend on these events to support the work that they do at Taylor Bray Farm. So I hope people will get out there and, and support them. The only other item I have, Mr. Chairman, is I was in attendance, as were several members of the board, at the Memorial Day Services at Town Hall. And year after year, they're put on by Maureen Tewey Bedford, who does an excellent job. As I said, at that ceremony, it's a labor of love for her. She doesn't look for any, any compliments or any recognition, but she does this year after year. And I would like to publicly acknowledge her good work and thank her on behalf of the town.
It's a great ceremony.
You're here.
Yeah, well done.
I just have one comment. In information we received regarding the MSBA approval of the News Station Avenue 4 to 7 School, one of the items was a request that the administration assure the MSBA that financing for the, not the, the building or rebuilding of Mattakee's was not going to be provided. Apparently, MSBA believes that representations were made that there would be no MSBA support for the rebuilding of Mattakee's. And they apparently were concerned that the town was told that.
Wait, wait a minute. Did you say MSBA was told, was told that it was represented, that MSBA wasn't going to fund the?
That's right.
Okay, so MSBA got rumor that, or had heard a rumor that somebody was saying that they weren't going to pay for it?
Right.
Oh, I hadn't heard, it's not the way I read it.
In the, in the meetings that I attended as a part of the building committee, we were told that the rebuilding of Mattakee's would not be covered by MSBA. We were repetitively told that.
You were?
Yes.
Really?
And they said zero support because it was not part of the educational plan. So, you know, I, I just think then we need to have an understanding as to, you know, what's, what, how is, how does that impact our decision-making with regard to Station Avenue versus the rebuilding of Mattakee's? Because if MSBA was in fact willing to support the rebuilding of Mattakee's at 54%, that would be a huge difference in relation to the construction of, of Station Avenue, so.
Now, can I just ask you a question? There were two sentences in there that referred to base repair. Is that what you're talking?
That's what I'm talking about, base repair, yes.
Yeah, I found that very interesting. I think that was underplayed a little bit.
I, I, I just, you know, we had so many times we were told by the consultants that it was not to be, not covered.
So where do we go from here? I mean, they're going to respond to it.
We need, I think we need to hear, you know, listen for, for what the response is. I, I don't know what, what, I don't know who is supposed to respond to MSBA and, and, you know, they're looking for assurance that it was not part of the decision-making.
I saw that. I guess my recollection of it was not that there wasn't a percentage reimbursement from them, but just that the overall cost was equal to or close to the, the new building. And so they decided to go in a different direction, I mean, regardless of the reimbursement, so.
I think the reimbursement, it was represented that there would never be any reimbursement on that base repair option.
I thought at the joint meetings, they represent, they, they told us that only one had, they only, that this particular consultant only had experience with one ever being approved out of, I don't know how many applications, but it wasn't a 0% chance, but it was a very, very low percent chance that.
But what the MSBA is looking for now is.
There was some historical significance, I think, to that rental.
Yes, you're right, it was a historic preservation.
Go ahead, Tracy.
But I think what they were looking for now is clarification that that in fact was part of the conversation. So I would assume that the district would respond to that. I don't have, do we, are there minutes of those meetings available? Yeah.
Absolutely.
So.
Norm, did you take the inquiry to mean that, that the state wanted them to demonstrate why they, they didn't consider that option? Because that's the way I read.
That's the way I read it.
I don't know, I don't know. You know, I, I just read that and I thought, you know, that's.
That's how I took it, Mike.
That's, that's not what I heard in the meetings.
And I'm anxious to see if I'm correct, what kind of information they provide to say that they did consider that and ruled it out as the best option.
Well, they did consider it and it was cost that they rolled it out, because I remember the process. But I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about the percentage reimbursement having been part of that conversation.
Yeah, well, that's a big, that's a big point, I think.
Yeah, so, we'll see what happens.
Anyways, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.